Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Please turn off your cell phones or use the etiquette feature. Today's hearing is being video and video, audio and visio recorded. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishna Bay, the Chipewa, the Hara Shoni, the Wendat people, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the In accordance with Sections 45 and 53, the Planning Act has amended this meeting of the Committee of Adjustments for the City of Toronto was called to order. The Committee of Adjustments considers applications for minor variances, permission to extend or alter lawful, nonconforming uses, and consent to create new lots. To ensure a fair and orderly hearing, I'm going to vet the agenda to determine which applications will be dealt with immediately and which applications require a more in-depth review. I'm going to call each item in the order listed on the agenda, ask for the agent or applicant, and then I'm going to ask for people who are in interest or in particular in opposition. The meeting will be held until all non-contested applicants have been cleared from the agenda. We will then hear the contested applications, which we will hold until the non-contested applications are heard, and we will ask you to go out in the hall and see if you can resolve any of your issues. If there's nobody present in interest or in opposition, then we'll proceed with the application. We're going to ask questions, we're going to take the matter into committee for decision. Each speaker's going to be given a maximum of five minutes. When addressing us, come forward, stand at the podium, hand in your decision request card to the committee staff seated on my right. Go to the podium, clearly state your name and address. The agent will have five minutes. Individuals will be allowed to express their views, have five minutes as well, unless there are several people, we don't ask you to express the same view, you'll have to select a spokesperson to present each individual concern. And so if there's more than two or three, we're going to ask to limit your time from five minutes to three minutes. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker at the end of their submission. When all speakers are finished, the applicant will be given an opportunity to rebut. We'll then take the matter into commission for decision, that's the end of all discussion. If you don't agree with the committee's decision, you may file an appeal. The appeal goes to a board called the Toronto Local Appeal Body, or T-Lab. For more information on T-Lab, consult their website or Committee of Adjustments' website. Appeal instructions are included on the back, on the bottom of each decision we send out. If you want to receive a copy of our decision, you have to fill out a decision request card and hand it in to staff seated on our right. And make sure you include your email address, because that's how the T-Lab communicates. Can I have a motion for confirmation of the last minute meetings?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Are there any declarations of interest on the morning list?
None.
Okay. We have some files to close, Madam Secretary.
Yes, we are closing files for number 40 and 44 Mitchell Avenue, Consent Application B-5718, B-5818, variance files A-59618, file A-59718, and file A-59818. These applications were heard October 24, 2018, in order to address heritage concerns and to meet with neighbors. The properties have been since designated, and we have not received a response from the agent regarding rescheduling or closing the file, so before you is to close the files. We also have a file at 209 Swarren Avenue, file A-618, from the agent. We have email correspondence that he's wishing to withdraw the application.
Are any of these asking for refunds?
Swarren is asking for a refund, however, this was deferred twice because the agent did not post the sign on the property. The matter's in your hands, too.
How many, how many files to be closed? Two?
Six.
Six?
Consent, three variances, and then another variance.
All right. Can we have a motion for closing all six files without refunds?
Some of them, with respect to both Mitchell and Swarren.
All right. Second.
I'll second them without the refund.
All in favor? Have your approval for the closing.
We also have a refund request. It's a refund request from 291 Glenhome Avenue. The application, you have correspondence with regards to the refund request before
To close the file and refund one half of the application fee.
All in favor? Have your approval. At the end of the close funds. I will now vet the agenda for the first time slot. When I call the property where the applicant indicates that they're here, and when I ask for neighbors, would the neighbors indicate that they're here? So number one, 4 Douglas Crescent, applicant.
Yeah.
All right. Are there any neighbors in opposition?
That's an underrepresented for 2 Douglas Crescent.
Okay. All right. Could, we're going to hold that one down. If you could meet out in the lobby and try and resolve your issues, that would be good. Number two, 34 Balsam Avenue, applicant. Yes, applicant? Yes. Okay. Any opposition? Yes, okay. We're going to hold this one. Perhaps you could go in the lobby and see if you can resolve your issues. Number six, 890 Coxwell Avenue. Yes, any opposition? We will be proceeding. Number seven, 173 First Avenue, applicant. Yes. Pardon?
Agent.
Agent, thank you. Any, any opposition? Yes, okay. We're going to hold this one. Would you meet out in the hall? Number eight, 66 Hamley Avenue.
The agent?
And opposition to Hamley? No opposition. We will be proceeding. Number nine, 290 Major Street.
Would like to request a deferral.
Okay.
Supported by the residents.
Are they here?
Yeah.
Okay.
And neighbors and council.
Are the neighbors here?
Yes, over there.
Okay. All right. So we will hear that in proper order. Number 10, 83 Wheeler Avenue, applicant.
Applicant here.
Any opposition? Okay. We will proceeding with that one. Number 11, 123 Madison Avenue. Any opposition to Madison Avenue? We will proceed. Number 12, 141 High Park Avenue, applicant. Yes. Any opposition?
Yes.
Okay. We'll hold that one down. Could meet outside and see if you can resolve. Pardon?
I think there's a deferral request.
Are you asking for a deferral, sir? Okay. All right. We'll hear it in the ordinary, well, perhaps you could speak to this lady in any event, maybe she's in favor of a deferral, which would shorten our, our hearing. Number 13, 224 Evelyn Avenue, applicant. Yes, any opposition? Okay, we will proceed. Number 14, 75 Delaware Avenue, applicant. Yes, any opposition? Okay. 15, 140 Eaton Avenue. You're both applicants. Okay, any opposition? Okay, we will be proceeding. Number 16, 1455 O'Connor Drive, applicant. Any opposition? Yes, okay. We'll hold it down.
Request.
Is this a deferral? Are you asking for a deferral, sir?
No.
Okay. All right. It's a, this contested deferral. Would you meet with this lady and see if you can resolve the issues?
We've already had several discussions.
Pardon?
I said, we've already had several discussions. Can you discuss? I'm not sure I'm getting it.
All right. So how about the deferral? Have you discussed the deferral?
Yes, we have.
Okay.
And the answer is from.
So you're satisfied you're not going to make any progress?
Yes.
Okay. This is a voluntary progress, if you, process. If you want to go outside, fine. If you don't want to, it's up to you.
Yeah, I think unfortunately.
Okay. 18, 20 Tubman Avenue.
17? 17. We missed 17.
Oh, wait a minute. So it was the last one, O'Connor?
O'Connor, yeah.
Yeah, all right. 17, 16 Rosemont Avenue. Yes, any opposition? Okay, we will be proceeding. Number 18, 20 Tubman Avenue, applicant. Any opposition? 19, 6 Edmund Gate, applicant.
No, requesting a deferral.
Pardon?
No, we're requesting a deferral.
Is there opposition?
No, we're worried by the council office and the residents.
So you're on behalf of the councillor and the residents?
Yes.
Okay. And you have no objection to the deferral?
Yes.
Okay. All right. We will hear that in the ordinary course.
So I believe we have four deferral requests, on either on consent, one contested. Should we perhaps deal with that at the outset, rather than having these people wait? There's a lot of people here with the ratepayers and the.
All right.
Because I think we should deal with the deferral request, since we have four of them.
All right. Number nine.
So neighbors here on number, number nine? Can you come forward?
Okay. So the purpose of this application is to demolish an existing one-story concrete block garage and construct a three-story fourplex with four surface parking spaces in the rear yard, having access from the public lane. On this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, staff report from community planning and urban forestry, support from 276 Major Street, and then quite a bit of opposition, including the Ratepayers Association. Okay. Sir.
Good morning. My name is Sean Yalbright. I'm the senator here on behalf of the applicant. We'd like to request a deferral. We had some really good discussions with the neighborhood and the Ratepayers Association, and we'd like time to continue those and revise the application.
Is there any opposition to the request for a deferral from the?
Absolutely not. We're making real headway.
Okay. Could you just, for the record, just give us your name and your address?
I'm S.D.X.T.E.R., Harper Village, residents and residents.
Okay. And you two are in agreement? Okay.
We have neighbors.
Yeah. All right. Is there a motion for a deferral?
Mr. Chair, I would move that the application be deferred to allow for further consultation with the neighbors.
All in favor?
With fee.
With fee.
Thank you.
The next deferral request is number 12, 141 High Park Avenue. Did I send them outside? Yeah. All right. I'm going to go on to the next one. Yeah. Number 16, 1455 O'Connor Drive. Is there anybody here?
Yes.
On that one?
No.
I mean, he can participate if he wants to. Your name, sir?
My name is Peter Smith. I'm a land planner for.
And could you tell us why you're in favor of a deferral?
He's opposed to the deferral.
You're opposed?
Monalese.
This is the request.
Okay. So perhaps you can come, and we'll hear from you first, and then we'll hear from the applicant.
My name is Kim Mullin. I'm a land planner for the city of Toronto. I sent in a letter yesterday requesting a deferral.
Move the microphone a little closer to hear the, thank you. It's not working.
Monalese is what kind of business?
Monalese bakery.
Is that where their bakery is?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And Monalese has, ah, there we go, now the mic's working. Recently made $145 million investment in this plant pursuant to a site plan approval granted by the city of Toronto. It's located in an employment area, the whole area that's near this site is an employment area, and there is noise that's generated by the Monalese operation. The applicant's noise study considered road traffic noise and noise from a commercial building that's adjacent, but not noise from the Monalese facility. And given the short timeframe, we have not had an opportunity to do our own noise study. There are policies in the city's official plan, in particular, OPA 231, which was approved before this application was submitted.
Are you asking for a deferral for a noise study?
I am asking for a deferral to allow time to have a noise study completed to consider the noise impacts of the Monalese facility on the proposed development.
Can I clarify? You said you'd only heard about this last week?
Yes. The notice was just, the plant received the notice and it was passed on to management.
They only noticed the applicant didn't approach you?
That's all that we've been made aware of, yes.
Thank you.
So can you speak to the official plan policy that deals with, I guess, compatibility of employment or?
Yes.
The uses in terms of the request for the noise study?
Yes. There is a policy in OPA 231. OPA 231 is the city's new employment lands official plan amendment, which was partially approved by the local planning appeals tribunal in July of 2018. This application was submitted in December of 2018. And there are a number of policies. 2.2, 4.5, which is referred to in my letter, requires sensitive land uses that are adjacent to or near employment areas to be. to or near employment areas to be planned to mitigate adverse effects from noise. And the whole area essentially on the west side of O'Connor is employment, and the Mondelez facility is right in the middle of the employment area. Policy 2.2, 4.6 also requires that a compatibility mitigation study be prepared as part of a complete application, and that didn't, it seems it didn't happen here. I don't know if it was an oversight on the part of planning or what, but that hasn't happened. The Mondelez facility hasn't been expressly considered in terms of noise impacts. It may be that there are no noise impacts, but we simply don't know, and the city has obligations to protect employment lands for long term, and in light of Mondelez's significant investment, we're simply asking that this be adjourned or deferred for a short period of time to allow a noise study to be done. With any luck, there won't be any problems.
Can I just get this straight? You're concerned about the noise that your plant generates on this property?
Yes, and that if there are noise impacts that aren't addressed before this development is approved, my client may be required to make changes to its operations and incur significant additional costs.
Is that part of your plan or the bylaw affecting you? That if somebody goes in across the road, you may have to make change, and the noise affects them, you may have to make changes?
It's part of the Ministry of the Environment's requirements in terms of environmental compliance approvals for noise and air emissions. So if a develop, unless it's addressed before the zoning, the planning approvals are in place, the obligation to mitigate is on the source of the noise.
What is the range of this requirement?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
How far away does the applicant in this case have to be before he's affected by your noise requirement?
Well, that's one of the things that needs to be studied. So the Ministry of the Environment has noise guidelines, D6 guidelines, that talk about areas of influence for different types of industrial operations. The area of influence for a Class II operation is 300 meters. Class I is 70 meters. We're 155 meters, so we're right about in there. And again, OPA 231 does require an applicant to look at the surrounding employment uses and to consider them, and that, at least, there's no information to indicate that that happened as far as the noise study here is concerned.
Looks like people didn't know about it. All right, let us hear from the applicant.
I would also just point out that there is a letter from economic development supporting this request for a deferral.
Good morning. So I'll speak right now simply to the deferral and not to the variances. So in terms of the.
Did you know about this noise requirement?
In terms of there being an issue raised, the issue was raised for the first time with us through correspondence received from Ms. Mullin yesterday, and we've been discussing it with her since then. The normal requirement to undertake a noise study as part of a site plan application was known to us from the outset. In fact, we did complete a noise study done by a qualified noise consultant who considered noise sources in the area. Given the distance of the site from the Mondelez facility, as well as intervening buildings, the noise consultant did not specifically identify the Mondelez facility as a noise source, although that was part of the noise.
Was he aware of the agreement and the requirements in the Mondelez agreement?
I'm sorry, there's no agreement?
Or a guideline?
The policies and as well the Ministry of Environment guidelines, yes. The consultant, because he's a qualified noise consultant, he is intimately aware of all of those requirements. What happened here was that the noise study was done in accordance with city requirements. The noise consultant did the normal due diligence in terms of identifying potential noise sources and studied those sources as part of the noise report.
Have you shared his report with Mondelez?
Mondelez, I believe, has a copy of that report, and their concern is that the noise report did not specifically identify the Mondelez facility as part of the noise environment, nor the expansion. And that was simply because, at a professional level, when the consultant did the noise study, the facility was considered to be far enough away, as well as there being intervening residential uses, which I'd like to explain to you, that caused him to conclude that that would not be a noise source that needed to be taken specifically into account.
Does that mean he didn't identify the noise from the Mondelez and didn't consider its effect, considering it too far away?
Correct. It was part of the background noise environment, but it was not explicitly identified. Could I just show you one thing?
Yeah, can we see where the factory is in relation?
Exactly, that's what I wanted to show you. Okay, so this is the subject's site. It is on the south, or let's call it the east side of O'Connor Drive. O'Connor runs on an angle through here. The Mondelez facility is located at the northwest corner of O'Connor and Bermondsey. This site here is approved and under construction for a seven-story residential building. That building is taller, as well as closer, to the Mondelez facility, and so it's for that reason when I say, if Mondelez has to provide for abatement of its noise with respect to this seven-story building that has been approved without, as I understand it, objection from Mondelez, our proposal at five stories, considerably further away, is unlikely, virtually impossible to create additional impact in terms of, in terms of the noise environment on this facility, given both the lower height and the greater distance. That's the reason why the noise consultant did not address the Mondelez facility as part of the noise study for this site. One thing that I can also say is that the noise report has been filed with the city of Toronto. It's part of the normal site plan approval process. That noise report will ultimately need to be peer reviewed by the city of Toronto. I've indicated to Ms. Mullin that we are happy to, as part of that, do additional work to take a look at the Mondelez facility explicitly, as well as the permitted expansion, and that can take place through the normal site plan approval process that we would have to go through in any event. The problem here is that we have been at this process, working diligently with city of Toronto staff. There was no reason to expect that this was going to be a concern, given what happened with the building beside us, and at this point, we would like to move ahead, get our minor variance approval, and then work through the rest of the site plan approval process with the city in the normal course of events.
Sir, do we know, do we know if the other seven-story building you're telling us about is very valid, it's actually closer?
Yes.
That was considered, and there was conversations with Mondelez, or if there's any conditions in their site plan, or whether they had a noise study looking at it? Because I don't know if Alice Fells was involved with that application or not, but.
My understanding was that Mondelez was unaware of that application when it went through the process, and so, to the best of my knowledge, there wasn't any communication between Mondelez and that applicant or vice versa.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, that's not my recollection. I believe that property was before committee as well. It was either that property or a property immediately across the road, but it was closer to Mondelez, and I recall the Mondelez coming to committee and requesting conditions about noise at the hearing.
That.
Details I'm not clear on, but I don't think it's accurate to say that Mondelez didn't represent itself at, relative to the adjacent development. I think, in fact, they did the exact opposite.
That wasn't our information in terms of the building immediately beside it. You may be thinking of another building on O'Connor as opposed to the one that I was talking about. Ms. Mullin may be able to confirm that, just for clarification purposes, but coming out of our discussions yesterday, it was my understanding that Mondelez was not actually aware of the applicant. It got missed, I think, just not, not obviously on purpose, but it just got missed when it went through the process. Mondelez did not identify that at the time. Is that, is that fair? I don't want to misstate what I understand.
Sorry, I think, sir, that the application that you're referring to is 1165 O'Connor, which is a different application, I believe.
Road from you.
Yeah, and Mondelez did request and get conditions. I believe the other, I'm not actually as familiar with the other side. I think that Mr. Smith might be right, which in some ways underscores my point. The OP requires applicants to be looking at these issues, and that's not happening, and it's being left to Mondelez to identify. I'd also just point out that some of the developments that have been approved in this area were approved before Mondelez's expansion, before its operations were expanded, so it's a different noise context now.
Okay. Sir, can I ask you, I got the impression that, and you correct me if I'm wrong, that if we pass these variances today, that that doesn't eliminate Mondelez's shot at getting her noise issues considered at the site plan?
That, that's correct, and we've said to Ms. Mullin that we are absolutely content to do that through the site plan approval process.
Okay, so this is all without prejudice to her concerns about noise at a different level?
Correct.
The issue I have with that, though, is one of the tests is whether or not it complies with the official plan in terms of, you know, approving variances, and I have concerns that, and in this case, the official plan requires us, you know, us to consider in terms of sensitive land uses next to employment areas, so I have concerns about that, waiting to the site plan stage.
All right, but we have a, a report that says it doesn't. So based on the evidence we have.
If I name it, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
And I'd like to just add as well.
We don't have a report that says, the report has not specifically considered Mondelez's facility. And as far as site plan approval is concerned, this committee, I think, is aware that my client, whatever rights my client has in the site plan approval process are only the rights that the city and the applicant gives it. It does not have any statutory right to participate, it doesn't have a right to appeal.
If I could, if I could just perhaps jump in. This is, first of all, in terms of the official plan designation that applies to the site, as well as the existing zoning, residential uses are already permitted on the subject site. There was an avenue study that was done six years ago that actually contemplated this form of development along, along O'Connor. A noise study was done, so the requirement of the official plan with respect to addressing compatibility was looked at. I think what Ms. Mullin is identifying is that that was not to the satisfaction of Mondelez, and, but in terms of official plan policy, the official plan policies have, in fact, been addressed through this application. That's why planning staff is supporting it. I think, to be fair, that the concern that Ms. Mullin raised, which is that she doesn't have the right to appeal a site plan approval application, is why she's here in front of committee, but that presumes that both the city of Toronto, as well as our applicant, would not take their concerns seriously. And I think the city of Toronto, through the economic development letter, has indicated that they would, in fact, take their, their concerns seriously and address it as part of the site plan approval process, which ought to be the way that these things are looked at, rather than having to do it through an appeal process.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a motion. After listening to, for 20 minutes, this discussion on this deferral, I believe that Mondelez has a valid concern. They've spent $140, $130 million in expansion. We've seen situations where a property is built and then the eventual owners spend the next 50 years complaining about noise and request steps to be taken to mitigate, and I'm convinced by Ms. Mullin's presentation, her letter, and the economic development, the city's concern on this, and I don't believe it's a hardship, I believe this property should have been dealt with in the noise study, and at least it benefits and it merits a short deferral to have that noise study and consider it, so that we don't have issues going forward for the next 50 years. So my motion would be to defer this application for a noise impact study to consider the Mondelez factory.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with my colleague. I also agree that Mondelez's presentation clearly set forward a problem that I think needs to be dealt with here, based on a study, not at the site plan control stage. So I'm supporting the motion.
I disagree. I think that we could proceed with this without prejudice to Mondelez's concerns, which will be addressed at the site plan issue. Even if she doesn't have appeal rights, she's got a right to be represented there. So I would oppose the motion. In any event, call for a motion. All in favor of the motion? All opposed. You have your approval for a deferral?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Flynn, representing this application. We're asking for a deferral, sir. The neighbors are not opposed to a deferral.
Good morning, my name is Linda Schneider.
So Planning Department has asked us to, Michael Flynn, 90 Cudore Avenue, Toronto. Planning Department has asked us to reduce the height, GFA, and eliminate the bathtub in the studio, which we've agreed to do and agreed with them to defer until we present proper drawings. I'm sorry?
We don't want to know what you want to do. We want to know why you're asking for a deferral.
We're asking for a deferral so we can make those changes to the drawings.
Neighbors are not opposed to the?
No.
Deferral?
Correct.
Can I ask a question about the changes you're making? Not in specifically, but is it going to significantly reduce the size of this? Because right now, you're asking for two stories when one is only permitted, so to me, that's a big stumbling block. I don't know exactly what you're proposing, but.
Well, actually, planning isn't opposed to the second story, they're opposed to the total height. Keeping in mind that there are two studies, or possibly a study with a second portion to it, which is the garden suites study that's being taken, undertaken by Planning Department, which would deal exactly with this kind of situation.
We're not at that stage in terms of that being.
No, but planning is taking that into consideration at this point. The other thing that has been brought forward is the mayor's motion at council to have planning investigate the missing middle residential capability, which again lends itself to this kind of an application. They are supposed to report back, yeah, planning is supposed to report back to council in the fourth quarter of this year.
Sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to ask, is this not just an artist's studio, or is this proposed?
No, this is an artist's studio. The owner is an artist, and this is for her.
A garden suite down the road.
Potentially.
Is that the study that you just referred to? That's examining whether or not buildings like this could become secondary suites? Is that the objective?
That's correct, but it would also deal with heights and GFA and.
Okay, so I think my colleague and I are both anxious about the same issue. Is this being proposed as a secondary suite?
No.
But it could become easily transferred into a secondary suite if the study supported that concept?
Yes, I would imagine it could.
And how would the city prevent it from operating as a secondary suite, even if it wasn't a.
Presently, that's why they had, they want the bathtub, not allowed to have a bathtub or a shower. You're allowed to have a sink and a toilet, and that's it. So we have to change our drawings to meet that requirement.
So is your intent to wait until after the report is done in the fourth quarter of this year and then come back at that point? Or, you know, this, we're not, we don't hand out deferral. out deferrals very readily because it clogs up the system. We do 44 hearings and application a day. And when you start deferring multiple, it really clogs the system. So before we give a deferral, as you heard this morning, we have to determine that it is the appropriate thing to do, rather than proceeding. You have everyone on side. It's just these people or the people here, too? Are you on this application, the people in the second row, or just these two people?
Just these people.
They're in favor of the deferral?
Yes.
Perhaps they could come up and speak to that.
Good morning. My name is Linda Schneider. I'm here on behalf of my mother, Erna Schneider. Erna Schneider resides at 143 High Park. She's an immediate neighbor. In terms of the deferral, we're really not taking a position. There are serious, I know my mother has very serious concerns with regard to the intended use of this, what's being proposed. I know my mother and the neighbors on Pacific, the street parallel and behind High Park are also very opposed to the building. One of the concerns that have been raised with this gentleman here today, and it's reflected in the letters from 186 or 188.
Are we just dealing with the deferral?
Yes, but just maybe, just a little further to what is being discussed.
Are we just dealing with the deferral?
Deferral, okay.
Please, we got 43 other...
So I guess bottom line...
Are you against the deferral?
We're not taking position with regard to the deferral. We are opposed to what's being suggested.
Excuse me, if, the idea of a deferral is because there is either the opportunity for revisions that would allow competing sites to come to agreement, or there are going to be substantial changes that would alter a person who is objecting. In your view, if we were to grant a deferral, our understanding would be that you would negotiate and with the objective of hopefully coming back with something that you could agree with and that the applicant would agree with. But it doesn't sound like that's what you're saying. You sound, it sounds as though your mother is opposed to the use itself.
A two-story, yes. She is opposed to two-story, as are the neighbors on Pacific. One of the large reasons is because in 2014, when she attended for a variance at, because of 140, one High Park, it was her understanding that it would be a single-family dwelling. There's concerns that it's three dependent...
So the applicant, in indicating, in response to Mr. Clark, indicated that he would be undertaking some changes, like removing a bathtub. But he's not talking about taking the second floor off. So if we were to defer it and you come back here months from now, it sounds as though we still have a two-story ancillary building before us. You will be opposed to that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Let's hear from him in response. Let's make a motion.
Do you want to come forward?
Yes, sir.
I understand there's a study going on. Do you have to wait till the study is finished before you want to bring this back?
We could do that, but it's really for the use of the studio. So, you know, what future possibilities exist, we'll have to wait and see what the bylaw says, of course. But I'm, I'm going to assume that when that study is complete, they're going to be recommending two-story ancillary structures.
Planning's memo says that they have concerns related to the size of the building, the height, and the number of stories. So I guess the question is, is the number of stories still going to be two?
Still going to be two. Planning Department has, is not opposed to that.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Mr. Chair, if there's no further questions, I'm prepared to make a motion that we hear the application today. We have the neighbors here. The applicant chose to make this application. We have the application before us. I don't believe any minor twigging. I believe we should hear it today.
All in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'd like to hear from you as expected, the merits of the application.
No, we're going to do in order. It's not...
There's one more deferral request.
We're going to hold you back.
So you need to wait, we're going to hear the full application, get a chance to speak.
Thank you.
Number 17, 16 Rosemount Avenue. Pardon me. 17, 6 Edmond Gate. They're asking for a deferral?
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of committee. I'm Janice Robinson of Goldberg Group. We got an email yesterday from the councillor's office, and his policy adviser is here. They want to hold a meeting of the neighbors regarding this variance application. So I'm requesting deferral to have that meeting.
Can I just ask one question?
Yes.
The same question that you just asked for is, is your expectation that, based on the outcome of those meetings, that there are sustainable changes requested, are you flexible to make any changes to the application?
Actually, in this situation, there will be no changes to the variances. I'm requesting deferral because the councillor's office wants to hold that meeting.
Okay.
Well, there's talking about a fence. If you read the councillor's letter, it says, "I've spoken to a member of the Jason residence. While frustrated the pool was built without the required variance, we're not specifically objecting to the pool. Rather, they are more concerned with the impact of the fence."
And my question was, would you anticipate any changes? And not to the variances, but would you anticipate...
There'll be changes with respect to the fence. So those discussions will relate to the fence. The pool itself, it's there. I mean, the...
Yeah, I think, well, the issue is the fence, if you...
The issue is the fence. And we're willing to have those discussions about the fence.
Possibly make changes to the fence. That's still on the table.
Oh, definitely. Definitely, there will be changes to the fence.
Mr. Robinson, as I understand it, there was some other place where the fence was being considered, and there had been an objection to the fence. I thought they should both be brought together.
Well, the variances don't relate to the fence. There is a fence exemption application in, that has been submitted. And the city chose to not process the fence exemption application until this matter was dealt with. But the fence has become a main issue. It's a very unusual situation because the house was built...
Mrs. Robinson, we're way behind here. We don't need to go from that. Let's...
I understand. I'm in your hands for the deferral.
...the city's position, and let's vote on the deferral request.
This meeting's going to deal with both issues.
It looks like there's another resident.
Yes. I agree with the deferral, but both the pool issue and the fence issue are alive. There is a city bylaw suggesting 75% soft scape for a front. And this is a real issue, especially recently. There was issue with artificial grass.
And get his name and address.
Sir, we don't want to deal with the issues. We're dealing with the deferral.
I just wanted a deferral on all issues, please.
That's fine.
Your name? Jeffrey Kaufman.
Where do you live?
99 Walter Plains Road. And I was not given time to do that. Do I give any advice?
Thank you. Let's hear from the city person, the councillor's representative.
Hi, good morning. I'm Denise McMullen from councillor Mountle's office. And we were approached by a number of neighbors who were quite concerned with this, with the applicant building a pool without proper variances. And there was a large fence that was built without a fence exemption over a year ago. And I guess they got this notice. They feel very frustrated about all these, all these issues where they haven't sought permission before actually doing. So we feel confident that, while the councillor feels confident, he can hold a meeting with the residents and the applicant and, and come to a resolution with the fence, rather than it going through community council through an appeal and that huge, long process.
Our usual deferrals are three months. Are you going to be able to resolve?
Yes.
In three months?
Yes. We would support an early rescheduling of the hearing as soon as possible. We can probably have the meeting and resolve issues within the next month or so.
Okay, so all in favor? Okay.
Well, there has to make a motion first. Someone has to make a motion for the deferral. I'm pleased to make that, this motion for deferral. This is an appropriate, unlike the last situation, this is an application where a deferral can be of use to resolve concerns with the neighbor. Mr. Kaufman's here, the councillor's office to facilitate. And I assume the applicant's also in favor. So I'll move that the application be deferred with the usual re-notification fee.
Perfect.
I'll second it.
All in favor? To have your deferral?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we can go back to number three, 16 Glen Stewart Avenue. The purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear ground floor addition and to construct a rear detached garage and rear surface parking pad, both having access from the rear public lane. On this application, we have before us materials submitted by the applicant and a staff report. Your name, please?
My name's Erin Dixon. I'm a property owner at 16 Glen Stewart Avenue. So just to give you a bit of a background on the property, we have a current garage structure that's accessed from the driveway. But when we first moved to the property, the city of Toronto came and measured our driveway and agreed it's too narrow to fit a car down the driveway. So we have street parking at the moment. We've had, quite a few of our neighbors have front pad parking, which we are not fans of for our own property, just for look, but also because we've got a hydrant and a hydro pole, so we can't actually access the front of the area for, for a front pad parking. But because there's a laneway behind, we actually could access. And several neighbors have done that in the last couple of years. They've put garages that access from the laneway. And we've also got a large condo building that's gone up on the corner. So parking on our street has become a little bit more of a challenge. So again, we're just trying to accommodate our vehicles on our own property. So looking for, I believe it's four variances. For the mudroom, we've got a, looking for a floor space index of .51. I believe the current building, by my calculations, our house, is already .48. So we're asking for a very slight increase. It's, it's like a eight by 10 foot.
That was going to be my only question.
It's tiny.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
In terms of the garage and the setback from the lane?
Yep.
Is that an existing condition in terms of where your current garage is?
This, I believe .3 is actually further away from the laneway than our current garage is. But we're trying to move it a little bit closer than the one meter current because we're trying to have as much area in our backyard as we can for the soft landscaping because that's a concern.
Well, concern often is, is there enough room for people to maneuver in and out of the lane, out of their own parking spots?
So the three other garages that have been built recently are closer than .3. So I think we're safe at .3.
And there is a planning condition, I believe? Are you familiar with the condition?
Yep. So, so we had initially went to the planners and asked for, actually, a covered, so a garage with a covered parking pad, because a neighbor had done that. And they, they were, and we agree, they were concerned that that's really affecting the soft landscaping. So we've said, you know what, we'll, we'll remove the carport idea. And so we went back with new plans and said, and we'll do, we're willing to do permeable pavers to try and sort of reduce the impact of, of the hardscaping back there. And...
Mr. Chairman, unless anyone else has any other questions, that was an excellent submission, by the way. Thank you. I'd like to move approval of the application subject to the planning condition. I think it's very straightforward, and it clearly meets the four tests.
Second it.
All in favor? You have your approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
There you go.
And to construct a new two-story detached dwelling with a front Intigo garage, a rear basement walkout, and a rear first-story deck before us on this application. We have materials submitted by the applicant. We have correspondence from Right of Way, a staff report from Planning, and three correspondents in opposition. Your name, sir?
Patrick McAuliffe, agent for the owner. In response to the letter from the Planning Department, I'd like to suggest that we make the following changes. If we could first go to item number, item number five, I'd like to change the length of the house from 22.89 to 19.99. The same with number six, change it from 22.89 to 19.99. As a result of that, item number one will be deleted. Item number two will be deleted. Item number three, I'd like to reduce that to 8.1. And the same with item number four, 8.1. Please remember that that is only the walls over the garage.
So it's 8.1, not 8.01?
8.1, or zero. That is only the walls over the garage. That is not the main walls of the house. They will meet the zoning requirements. Also, I'd like to change item number seven to read .60 rather than the .10.
If no one has any further questions?
Just, just a minute.
Point zero?
Point seven.
Number seven, that was changing it from point zero, 0.3 to 0.6.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if no one has further questions, I believe the changes proposed by Mr. McAuliffe makes the, addresses the concerns raised by the Planning Department. And I believe this application is now worthy of support. We don't have an FSI. We don't have a lot coverage issue. And I believe the other variances are minor and meet the four tests. So I move approval of the application as amended.
Second, here?
Mr. Chairman, I'm unable to second the motion. I don't know that we know that those changes, in fact, meet with the Planning Department's approval. They basically indicated that the length and depth were excessive, which is my view as well, and that they didn't meet with the, the overall character of the area, either in the bylaw or the official plan. And the reductions are welcome, but I, I still think that this is an overly long building. And there is no information that I have that would indicate that these new lengths would, in fact, meet the Planning Department's approval. So I will be opposing the application.
Do we have a second here for the motion?
Well, I, just to weigh in, I, I have concerns as well. I can't tell, you know, just based on the numbers, whether or not, without a site plan, how this impacts the neighbors, both of which are bungalows and are relatively short in comparison to the proposal, in terms of length and depth of the property.
So you're opposed to the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion of refusal?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I bring forward a motion of refusal. I don't believe, in fact, that this does meet the pervading character of the area, the neighborhood. And I think it sets a rather dangerous precedent. So I recommend the application be refused.
As amended.
As amended, yes.
Do we have a second?
I'm going to second it.
All in favor?
Opposed. Thank you.
Number six, 890 Coxwell Avenue. Purposes of this application is to alter the existing one-story detached dwelling by converting the existing garage into additional living space and constructing a front yard parking pad. We have before us materials submitted by the applicant, email, correspondence from the planner, and Right of Way management, and correspondence in support from one party. Your name, sir?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. My name is John Boone, acting for the agent.
Do we need a presentation from Mr. Boone?
Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Chairman, I think this is a, a welcome approach to expanding living space in, in a particular home. There are no conditions recommended by anyone, so I approve approval of the application, which I think clearly meets the test for variance.
I'll second it. I agree.
All in favor? You have your approval, sir. Thank you. Number eight, 66 Hamley Avenue.
Morning. I'm Peter Higgins of Peter Higgins Architect Incorporated. My clients...
Mr. Higgins, could you just wait till I do my introduction?
Oh, I beg your pardon.
Purpose of the application to demolish an existing one-story concrete block garage and to construct a three-story fourplex with four surface parking spaces in the...
No.
We'd one over. It's number eight.
It's eight.
It's eight.
That's nine. Sorry. Can't read.
You would have got approval for the wrong thing.
Didn't quite sound like my son.
You would have gone and got the job, Mr. Higgins.
Yeah.
I can't see. My glasses aren't very good. Okay. Purpose of this application to alter the existing three-story single-family detached dwelling by constructing... dwelling by constructing a two-story rear addition. And we have before us a material submitted by the applicant and informed form letters in support. Is that your project, sir?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Higgins?
I'd be happy to speak to it very briefly. I know that we've spent a lot of time with deferrals. My clients couldn't be here, they have two young children. They've bought this property for their family. We've, I have personally spoken to eight neighbors, they've spoken to a number. We have letters of no objection from both immediate neighbors, three out of 16 that I hand-delivered. And everybody was kind of interested to know why such a big house, do you need to make it larger? And I had to explain that when you demolish a rear addition, because it didn't make any sense to try to hold it up while we added to it, that we have to add all that square footage back again. In reality, the existing house is already at 1.04 times the lot for the FSI, and we're increasing that to 1.11. The actual additional space is only 17.2 square meters. There's no change to the rear setbacks, save and except a bay window, which the neighbor who faces that bay window loves the look of because the back of the existing house is very ugly, let's put it that way. The two houses are quite at close proximity because the neighboring house to the west was the old carriage house for this home. So we're, we think we're going to restore the house to a beautiful Victorian that it is, with all new windows, cleaning the brick, maintaining the slate roof, et cetera, all new wood trim. And the neighbors seem to be okay with it once they understood the nuance of the addition.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. If no one has any further questions, thank you for explaining it appeared to be a very high FSI, but you're only adding very little. I'm pleased to make a motion approving this application. I don't believe there are any conditions.
No, there aren't.
There are conditions?
No, there aren't.
No.
No. I would second the motion, I think it's an excellent solution.
All in favor? You have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good day, gentlemen.
Purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a third-story addition with a rear covered balcony, a rear two-story addition with a rear covered porch on the main floor. And we have before us materials submitted by the applicant, a staff report from planning and support from 180 Lee Avenue. Your name, sir?
My name is Regent Suelal. I'm the agent for the, or I'm the, yeah, the agent. So the property in question is a 100-year-old home that has fallen into what's rather decrepit at this point in time. We are renovating it to bring it up to modern standards, high-quality finishes throughout. The variances specifically with regards to the side exterior main wall, sorry, I'm not an architect, the roof looks like this and we're dormering it like this, which is why the wall is now taller than requiring the variance. The actual height of the building is not changing at all, and of course, once you dormer it like that, you increase the GFI.
What is the current GFI?
It's .6 times the area, sorry, the, uh, sorry, it would take me a minute to get that information. I want to say somewhere around .7, but I can get you the exact one from the plan. .7 or .8.
Could you tell me if the front elevation is changing? You've, the pitched roof and the dormer at the front, is that, that's not existing.
There is a dormer at the front currently.
Yeah, but you're just changing the shape of the dormer.
The top, yes. So the dormer at the front is staying, the front of the house is, it's just the sides.
All right. Thank you. And you've seen the planning department condition?
Yes. Basically, my understanding is it says that as long as we build it to the drawing, they are satisfied.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move approval of the application unless anyone has any questions subject to the planning department condition. I think it's a reasonable proposal and one that clearly meets the four tests for variance.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor? You have your, you have your approval, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Number 11, 123 Madison Avenue. Purpose of this application is to convert the existing rooming house pertaining, containing seven dwelling rooms and one dwelling unit into a rooming house containing nine dwelling rooms with one dwelling unit to be located in the basement. And we have with us, for us, before us on this application, materials submitted by the applicant, correspondence from planning, staff report from Heritage Preservation.
No planning, I think, just heritage.
Pardon?
Just heritage.
Well, we have email correspondence from planning.
Oh, sorry.
And we have correspondence in opposition from, one, two, three, four, four residents and the Ratepayers Association. Your name, please?
Monica Kuhn, K-U-H-N. I'm the architect and agent, and I'm only aware of three letters of opposition. Do you have copies of the other two? I have the Ratepayers and I have...
Well, you're right, she's two from 604.
I have 582 here on, and I have 604 here on.
Yeah, we have two from 604 here, but we count them as one.
Oh, okay.
They may say different things, but we still only count it.
Okay.
Perhaps you could tell us about this?
Is Mr. Clark...
He's not here.
Okay. All right, well, we, my client, my clients are over here, the property manager is here, he's going to be my assistant to show you some, some drawings and some photographs. The property was purchased in 2017, there have been no changes up to this point. They purchased the property with a license for nine rooms. I can, maybe I can deal with number three first, which has to do with the number, trying to, trying to sort out the differences between the building department and municipal standards and licensing. The existing and proposed dwelling room count, which is the number of rooms in the rooming house, is nine. That's existing and proposed. The problem is that although the property has had a rooming house license for nine dwelling rooms since 2005, which was issued by municipal standards and licensing, the city's building department has conflicting documentation over a series of building permits. I have, I've pulled all the records, and in 1978, which is the last building permit issued for work, they approved for a seven dwelling units and a ground-floor apartment. That apartment was at some point converted into two additional rooms, so from seven plus a unit to seven plus two equals nine. In the previous permits, it already said nine rooms, it was changed over. You can see the drawings if you want to, they've got things crossed out, whatever, so it was very unclear exactly what was going on there, but we are now trying to legalize the two units, which were a conversion from a ground-floor apartment.
So did you say that they had building permits for the conversion of the ground-floor apartment to different, two other rooms and...
There is documentation to that effect, but the last permit from 19...
From 78.
78 shows seven rooms plus this apartment.
So now you've divided the apartment?
Not me. At some point after 1976, it was turned into two rooms, and municipal standards and licensing has given them a rooming house license for nine rooms since 2005.
Okay, so now you're asking for...
I'm asking for the legalization.
Dwelling unit in the basement?
Yes, so there is no variance for the unit in the basement. I'm just trying to legalize the existing nine rooms.
Can I clarify then?
Yeah.
It sounds as though the purpose of the application as stated in the agenda is wrong.
Um...
You've said this is an existing condition.
It is.
So it's not to convert the existing rooming house containing seven dwelling units and one...
Well, on paper at the building department, that's what they have on record, seven rooms plus an apartment.
But in fact, it's...
It's been nine rooms since before 2005. So I'm just trying to, this has come up in the research.
We see this sometimes, it says build an addition, but it has a comment, it says...
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. My clients bought the property with the license in hand, knowing, thinking that it was nine rooms, and when we started doing our research with the building department, it turned out that their records were not the same. So that's, that's that issue. So what we're trying, technically, the city's, the building department records show seven rooms plus an apartment. We're trying to legalize the nine rooms, and we would like to put a unit in the basement, but that is not a variance.
Is permitted a secondary suite?
Right.
Can I ask you something about the house licenses that you gave?
Yes, sure, sure.
It says grand total 11. Is that for, I'm just, I don't know, it says three, six...
Oh, that's just in the basement, it shows common bathroom, so it's looking at rooms, like in the basement, there's common space right now, there's laundry, there's a common space, there's a bathroom, there's storage, et cetera, and so we're going to take the front part.
So it's the bottom here, total dwelling rooms not...
That's correct.
Total licenses not...
Yes, that's right.
And it takes into account what's...
Yep, no problem.
Well, I'm still confused about the purpose. The purpose says existing rooming house containing nine dwelling rooms and one dwelling unit into a rooming house containing nine dwelling rooms.
And a new dwelling unit in the basement.
So that dwelling unit is going, and you're going to have nine dwelling, the dwelling unit on the ground floor.
Is, yes, is going to be legally recognized as two rooms.
Two rooms.
Yes. And the new unit in the basement is not a variance, but that's what we're asking for, and that, that was what triggered the investigation of what had come before.
So was there a dwelling unit in the basement?
No.
And it was never approved?
There was never a room in the base, a dwelling unit in the basement, there was a dwelling unit on the ground floor. It was like a care, at some point, it was like a caretaker's unit.
So you're legalizing the nine dwelling rooms and authorizing a dwelling unit in...
Yes, that's what we're asking for.
All right.
Yeah, okay. So then, variance number two refers to when, when you go about converting a house to a rooming house, you're only allowed to make one exterior alteration. In 1977, legally, there was a rear addition made, which is, which was the back stairway and a bathroom for that ground-floor unit. So that technically is the first exterior alteration. We are now asking for the second alteration, which is to put in the front stair, the basement entry stair. So that's where that variance comes from.
Which variance is that?
Number two.
Number two?
Is there any other?
My concerns are with variance number one, so I'm concerned with that stairway.
Yep, okay, so variance number four, let me just deal with that. We've never had parking on the, on the property, there will be no parking on the property. Now, we have given the neighboring, given the neighboring concern, we and Heritage has comments, Heritage is fine with the stair because we are proposing to shield it with landscaping, but we, right now, the property... Do you want to show it? Oh, sorry. So that's the property right now, and you can see that there's a planting bed in front of the, front of the house beside the concrete stairs, and then the rest of it is paving completely right now and a concrete walkway.
Where's the property line on that, street line?
Uh...
Did it, first path on the sidewalk?
Yeah. I'll show you that in time. So Miles, why don't you show what's there now? So right now, you can see that the green area is the planting bed that's currently there, and the sidewalk is maybe two feet from the property line.
And the planting bed is where the proposed stair is?
Yes, so let's look at number two. So this is what we had proposed, which, because, we are pushing the planting bed further out, but because the stair is taking up the space, it's going to be a reduction of green space. So what we're proposing today, we are happy to take out all of the paving in front of that planting bed, and I've done revised drawings and revised zoning.
Yes.
Well, it doesn't get rid of it, but it makes it better.
The only question I have is how do you get to the top of the stair? You go across the grass?
No, there's a walkway on the side, walkway beside the property line. Can you see it?
Here?
Yes.
Okay, this is property line here?
Yes. So by my calculations, we are, we were at .18 or .19 with the original condition as is right now. We were going down to .8, or .08 or 8%, and with this, we're going to 37%. Yes, it's right on there, 12.93.
Okay. And have, have you investigated putting the entrance at the back of the property or the side of the property, the entrance into the basement?
Well, the thing is that the unit is right at the front, so putting an entrance, there is an entrance at the rear for the rest of the house, which is part of the exiting system, but the neighboring houses, one right beside them to the south, has already a basement stairway, and I think there's a few more on the street affront, yes. I don't know if you can see it on that floor.
You might. Barely.
Yeah, you can see, there's a railing there, and then there's a wider opening a little bit, but...
So their existing soft landscaping would be similar, would sound like, would be similar to what you're proposing?
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
Do you have any further questions of Ms. Kuhn? Somebody have a motion?
Any issue with the heritage condition?
No, not at all. Yeah, we're quite happy to discuss with them. Michael, did you, you missed the first part, did you have a question?
I guess I'll abstain because I wasn't here for the proposal.
Okay, on that basis, that was an excellent presentation, and I'm ready to bring a motion on the application as amended. I did have concerns...
I did have concerns originally about the proposed front yard landscape open space, so softscaping, and you've improved what's existing, so... And as well, that will help shield the proposed walkout. So my motion is for approval of the application. You demonstrated that the nine units have been there for some time, and the secondary suite is not...
An issue.
Exactly. It's not a variance before us. So my motion's for approval, subject to the heritage department condition requested.
Did you want to tie it to the site line or not? I don't think so, because the percentage is in the variance.
Yeah, we're...
Okay. I would second the motion.
All in favor, you have your approval.
Thank you very much.
Okay, number 13, 324 Evelyn Avenue. Purpose of this application, to legalize and to maintain the third dwelling unit, which was constructed without a building permit. We have before us material submitted by the applicant, a report from parking, correspondence and opposition from two residences. Your name, please.
My name is Joanna Fast. I'm a planner with Evans Planning, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. We've only seen correspondence from... A letter of opposition from one resident. Could you advise of the other?
Attired and noble. Let me see if we have somebody here.
There's a new one. It was the apples.
230 Evelyn. 230 Evelyn.
Okay.
And the original one was 222.
Okay. I have the original one.
You want the one from... Is there a... I have my copy.
There's a photo on the back.
There's a photo on the other side.
If I may, maybe you could proceed with the next one. I'll have a read through this, and we can come back. Would that be all right? No? Okay. The property at...
Yeah, if you want to look at that, we'll go on and get back to you.
Okay.
All right, number 14, 75 Delaware Avenue. Purpose of this application, to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story detached house by constructing a rear two-story addition, rear first, second, and third floor decks and front porch with a second-story balcony. We have before us in this application, material submitted by the applicant, staff report from transportation and correspondence... Pardon me, I'm in the wrong one. We have material submitted by the applicant and email correspondence from planning. Your name?
Good morning. Teneum, agent of the owner.
Do we need any presentation on this, or does anybody have any questions?
I just have a question. Have you had any discussions with your neighbors about the decks that you're proposing and the overlook and possible privacy issues?
Yeah, so the owner has had discussions with neighbors, I believe 77 Delaware Avenue. That's to the south.
Yes.
And we've been back and forth about the type of balcony, the styles, but no opposition, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions? Do you have a motion?
Okay, Lisa?
Mr. Chairman, if my colleagues don't have any further questions, I'd like to move approval of the application without condition. It's very straightforward. In this case, whereas I'm a big fan of privacy of decks, these decks don't seem to be overly large or, given the configuration of adjacent lands, they don't seem to pose a serious privacy overlook, so I'm not recommending screening of them. So my motion is simply for approval of the application as submitted.
I'm pleased to second that motion.
All in favor, you have your approval.
Thank you.
Number 15, 140 Eaton Avenue. Purpose of this application, to convert the existing two-story detached garage located in the rear yard and behind the existing single-family dwelling into a detached single-family dwelling. We have before us material submitted by the applicant, correspondence from planning, a report from planning and from engineering, and support, 13 form letters, opposition from one party. Your name, sir?
Craig Race, the applicant and architect.
These are your clients here?
These are the owners, Derek and Kathy, correct.
Got you. I think we should have a presentation with the refusal.
Okay, sir, can you tell us something about this?
I would be very pleased to. Thank you for having us today. First of all, a bit of background on this. I have another company called Lanescape that works with staff and counselors to enact the laneway housing policy, and we regularly get inquiries about garden suites. And I almost universally turn them away because I don't believe that the time is right in most cases for a garden suite, but this is a unique situation. What you have before you is an existing structure. You should have a copy of these exhibits. The image on the left shows a rendering of the structure as it stands today. It is two stories, and the proposal seeks to maintain it at its height and footprint, with the exception of a small dormer to allow some headroom for a stairwell.
Could you put that on the overheads, or I think it would be more effective?
Certainly. So you're aware of the planning report? You've read the planning report dated August the 9th?
Yes, we have. And with respect to that...
Excuse me, before you go any further, you've raised something that I find interesting. You indicated that you deal a lot with laneway suites. You either promote them or you have people coming to you. And you drew a distinction between that and a garden suite. Can you clarify for us how you see the difference between the two? Because that's an issue that we have with this application.
Certainly, the simple difference is that this property does not have a laneway behind it. What makes it unique, though, is that it has a very large side driveway that provides the access for parking and emergency services that are required. Does that explain it? I can go into more detail.
So this drawing...
Yes.
Property, the building on the right is the main house?
That's correct.
And that building is the garage that you propose to turn into a house?
Yes, that's as it stands today.
Is this one... Is this the one that's a garage or a garden shed?
It is currently a two-story garage.
All right, go ahead.
So as I mentioned, we're not adding height or expanding the footprint, the result of which is zero added shadow or privacy impact. We actually can't add windows to any of the sides facing neighbors. We're only doing that to the side facing the main house. And these characteristics have helped Derek and Kathy bolster broad and enthusiastic neighborhood support. You'll see we have 13 letters of support, and we've gotten verbal support from many others, which I'll throw on the slide here. So you can see all of the immediate neighbors are in favor of this, and as witnessed by the lack of opposition today, everyone seems supportive. From a technical perspective...
How, sir, do you get around the bylaw that says you can only have one house on a lot?
Well, that's why we need a variance, and that's why the laneway suite bylaws don't apply specifically to this property. Much like before the laneway suite policy was enacted, we got variances for that for laneway dwellings and for garden suites, and that's what we're seeking today.
How is going from one unit on a property to two units a minor variance?
Uh, well...
Sounds like 100% variance.
I don't necessarily agree with that. As you know, secondary suites are allowed as of right. In fact, in this neighborhood, triplexes are permitted. The main house is one unit and will remain one unit because Derek and Kathy need their basement for their family, so the second unit on the property will simply be detached in the existing structure at the rear.
So it will not be severed off? It's not two separate pieces of property, it's still one lot?
Correct. This will not and cannot be severed, as far as I'm aware. Part of the reason for that is that services for the detached unit will come from the main house, so this does not require an additional service connection. And similarly, emergency service access is required down the side yard, which we conform to engineering's requirements for egress, which is a one-meter access point and 45 meters to a curb.
So do you have variances with respect to providing services because plumbing, electric, et cetera?
No, we do not require variances for any of those. And the standard for servicing detached units has been established by the laneway suite policy, and we have no issue following that.
But you don't fall within the bylaw for laneway suites?
Correct. I'm just speaking from a technical perspective on how we'll ensure it's serviced and kept safe.
Well, as I understand it, if you had an ancillary garage, which was not a laneway suite, you wouldn't be able to hook up water, et cetera, to that unit.
I don't believe that's correct, and certainly when it's a detached unit, engineering does not have an issue with that. As a matter of fact, it's simply a homeowner endeavor. It's not something that the city's required to do anything for because we're using the existing service connections.
It's not our understanding.
I'm sorry?
Not our understanding.
Well, we've been doing this for... I've done it for many years on detached secondary units, and it's as simple as running a water line and an electrical line underground to the rear structure.
I understand how simple it is, I just don't understand how it's allowed, because we're often told you can't have a garage with a studio, et cetera, but you can have it, but you can't have water hookups, et cetera.
Right, so often people will get secondary service connections, and certainly we're not allowed to get a second connection for water or sewer or anything else. But we actually don't require that because we can use the existing connection and branch it off, much like you would for a basement apartment, just for the detached rear unit. So engineering doesn't have to provide any additional service connections for this project.
Do you have a precedent for a second dwelling in the backyard that isn't a laneway house?
There's somewhat few and far between. There are a few in the west end, none that are immediately nearby.
So there are coach houses, for example, in Rosedale, et cetera. How are they authorized, or are they grandfathered?
It's a combination of both. As a matter of fact, I got approval for a coach house on Jones Avenue, which is not far from here. And again, it's simple committee of adjustment variances, and then the services are branched from the main house, so engineering does not have to provide anything else.
Is that approval for an additional, whatever this is, an additional dwelling unit on a lot in that case, or is that for something else, like an artist's suite or...
371 Jones? That was a...
Yes, I don't remember.
Yep, that was a secondary home, and in fact, there was a triplex in the main house, so this was the fourth unit at the back of the property. And if I can add...
Do you have... Is this a variance, or is it something else that those other properties got?
It was all variances. That was the only requirement we were seeking beyond just typical building permit application.
So what you're seeking here is that the number of residential buildings be increased to two?
Yeah, that's a required interpretation by the bylaws because they don't specifically allow for garden suites the way they do laneway suites. So although it is a secondary unit on the property, the definition doesn't apply directly to this, which is why we have to seek the variances that are before you.
So do you have examples of other variances from the committee of adjustments in which they allowed two dwelling units on a single property?
Not with me today. 371 Jones Avenue is a nearby example. There are many streets...
I want to know if that's grandfathered.
That was not grandfathered. We came to committee of adjustment for a very similar list of variances we got here. There are many coach houses on Peyton Lane that's also about a kilometer from here that were a similar process.
Can just hold on. Madam Deputy Secretary, can we check a couple of those? If you could give us two or three addresses?
I don't think that's strictly necessary. We've having this nice, very nice discussion, but I think let's wrap up his presentation and bring it into committee for any further questions or a motion.
It's not a nice discussion, it's a question of whether it's allowed because I don't believe...
Mr. Chair, I think it comes down to the last two paragraphs of the planning report, which states that "enabling the development of a garden suite is a matter of citywide significance, as evidenced by City Council's direction. The city planning to review the potential of secondary suites in ancillary buildings that do not abut public laneways. And the city will be conducting a comprehensive review. In the meantime, without a clear intent of the applicable zoning bylaw to allow garden suites as of right, considering garden suites applications through committee of adjustment processes premature, risks setting inappropriate precedence and would lead to unpredictable results."
Yeah, so with respect to that...
So I don't buy your argument that it's the same as acting an extra dwelling unit in a detached house. You're seeking, as the chair pointed out, to add a secondary building and would create a very unfortunate precedent. Laneway suites are laneway suites. This has not yet been, I think it's premature.
And pre-existing coach houses are different?
That's correct.
Cut a little fish because they're pre-existing.
So even if you're providing me examples of 10, 20, 100 coach houses, I don't think that's relevant to your situation here, and I think your application is premature.
So we actually did discuss that with planning, and even if we wait the number of years until that policy is in place, we would likely still have to come through committee of adjustment in order to preserve the existing structure. So we actually don't believe that we are doing anything now that we won't have to do in a few years' time when that policy's in place. And given what we've been talking about today with the missing middle and laneway suites and the action the city's putting in place to allow this type of housing, we actually think now is the perfect time. And the unique conditions of this existing structure with the side driveway, we don't believe sets a precedent that anyone else could follow.
However, the study that's being proposed and is going to take place could generate guidelines and new bylaw conditions that you would have to apply, you would be governed by, and we don't know what those are. So I don't accept your argument either. You're clearly not a laneway suite. You don't qualify as a laneway suite. Garden suites, the planning department has already indicated that they're going to look into that form, but it's premature to approve them right now because they don't know what kind of zoning bylaw implications that might result. So I think, as my colleague has indicated, consideration of this application at this time is, I agree, is premature. I don't believe... I completely agree with the planning department. I think we're on very dangerous grounds with this application because it doesn't actually conform to the general intent and purpose of, certainly of the bylaw and of the official plan.
Indeed. I mean, the official plan does allow for detached secondary suites now. That was changed last summer, which is what we fall under. And can you explain how the precedent we're setting here would allow other properties to do what we're doing? Because we do have a very unique circumstance.
Well, you've made your presentation. I've just... I've said that I question what you're saying. I don't buy it. Like my colleague, I believe this is premature. It clearly would set a precedent, and the planning department has already said that in their recommendations. It said it could set a dangerous precedent for future development. So unless you have additional information, I'm not here to justify why I hold the view that I hold. My view is based on the information that's been provided to me. Based on that information, I believe this application is premature. Or premature is the most positive thing, or also something that I would never want to approve. But I would like to know more information, and that information will come from a future study that has not taken place yet.
Indeed. I remind you that there are a lot of nearby neighbors who have the opposite opinion.
I don't care about the nearby neighbors.
I'm sorry, you don't care about the neighbors?
They're the ones that have the decision. This is against the bylaw. The neighbor's opinion as to whether it's a nice property, a nice thing to do, and they'd like to do it too, doesn't influence us. What influences us is the bylaw.
And...
The bylaw says you can only have one house on a lot. And believe me, that's an old bylaw because it was the first case that I ever did when I practiced law. Lady built two houses on one lot, she had to tear one down. So you want to build it, you're going to have to tear it down.
Mr. Chair, sorry. I think we've spent enough back and forth with the applicant on this uncontested application, and I am prepared to make a motion at this time of refusal of the application.
I would second the motion.
All in favor, have your approvals...
Refusal.
Refusal, sir. Number 1716 Rosemont Avenue. To alter the existing two-and-a-half-story detached dwelling by constructing three secondary suites, a rear third-story addition, rear ground floor and third-floor decks, and to enlarge the existing rear-story second deck, we have before us material submitted by the applicant, a staff report from planning, 20 form letters in support, opposition from five, plus an 18 signature petition and opposition.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Would you like your presentation?
Well, let's, I don't think.
Probably should. I have questions, and I think we should. First of all, I want to know, are four units permitted as of right?
Yes.
It doesn't appear to be a variance.
No. Fourplexes are permitted use. It's our zone, which permits up to small apartment buildings.
Thank you.
And there are a number of fourplexes already on the street. Oh, I'm sorry. Sean Galbraith, planner here on behalf of the applicant.
That's sufficient, I think.
On the screen, I've placed, the blue are existing fourplexes, and the pink are existing, or at least duplexes.
So I take it from variance number two that it's only the basement that's less than 35 meters?
Correct. The overall average meets the requirement. The other three units greatly exceed it. It's just the existing basement that doesn't. And that's because we're not expanding the footprint of the basin, and we're sort of limited to what it is. But I don't believe that it is deficient by very much.
In any event, my opinion, Mr. Galbraith, is that 65 square meter minimum, which has been around for over 20 years, when I was on committees previously, needs adjusting because, you know, 65 is larger than most condominium units.
Exactly.
Being built today. So I think that that, you're just slightly below it.
And in fact.
59 compared to 65 square meters in one unit.
In the secondary suite bylaw changes that came through earlier this year, that provision was removed entirely.
Okay.
It's just sort of a legacy requirement for us.
Correct.
We're going down to 40 square meters?
Maybe not quite, but maybe. Micro units.
All right. Do we have any further questions?
Planning permission, have you seen the request?
I have. We have no issue with that. Privacy screening, that's fine.
I'm ready for a motion. If anybody else, Carl, do you have any questions? Okay. On that basis, thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
You've spoken to the issue that was in my mind in terms of whether four units are permitted. Obviously, it is under the zoning. So my motion is for approval of the application subject to the condition set out in the planning department memo with respect to the opaque screening.
Second the motion.
All in favor. Have your approvals, sir.
Thank you.
Number 1820 Tubman Avenue. Purpose of this application is to legalize and to maintain 54 undersized parking spaces constructed and located in the twin levels of underground parking for the 27-story mixed-use building approved undersized specific bylaws 141, 2005, and 275, 2014. We have before us material submitted by the applicant. So I assume this is something that came up after construction was completed, and you discovered all these deficient parking areas.
Yes, that's the case. So I'm Allison Shooter from Bowsfield, the agent. So the building was constructed, and they were doing detailed survey work for the plan of condominium application. And in that situation, it was discovered that in certain locations, they're generally servicing elements, so vertical and horizontal pipes, and things like that, so gotten away, and they became obstructed spaces.
Mr. Chair, I don't think we need a presentation on this application. This is something very typically happens once the as-built is done, and we have the Bowsfield's letter, the BA report justifying these spots as being, this is minor, and is something that typically does happen, as you've just explained. So I'm pleased to move approval of the application with no conditions.
All in favor. Have your approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we go back to number one, 4 Douglas Crescent. Purpose of this application is to construct a new three-story detached dwelling with an integral garage, prehappy forest, materials submitted by the applicant, email correspondence from Urban Forestry, Toronto Ravine and Conservation Authority, a staff report from Urban Forestry, a letter from the councillor, and correspondence on behalf of the Governor's Bridge Ratepayers Association.
We can share a few. I don't have enough. Make sure you have a copy for the neighbors, too.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Simon West. I'm the agent. I'm also the designer of this project. We're proposing to demolish an existing two-story building and, in its place, put up a new two-and-a-half-story building. We have a number of variances here. We have had meetings with neighbors. We've had a total of two, plus today's meeting, so we've had a total of three meetings. There has been some pushback regarding the length of the building. My client is willing to look at the idea of a possible reduction on the ground floor at the rear of four feet, or 1.2 meters, which would actually end up bringing the entire building in line with the 17-meter, other than the front nib, which is at the front of the house, which has created the building to be the 20.05 meters. So if I reduce 1.2 meters in the rear, if you look at the second floor, the second floor is actually 17 meters. The entire length of the building would then become 17 meters. We still do have an issue regarding side yard setbacks and the overall height of the building. It doesn't remove it because the overall length of the building is still at 20.05 meters because they measure that front nib wall as being part of the length of the building. But the actual real length of the building, if you ignore the nib, will be 17 meters.
But you did reduce something.
Yeah, I did. So in current hearings, what I've done is I've taken the second floor and what would be considered the attic, or some people look at it as being the third floor. I've actually reduced that back in the past by four feet consecutively, so there'll be a stepping in the rear of the building to help reduce the sidewall mass and to help the neighbors so that they don't have so much of a large wall posing either side of their property.
But you just talked about taking 1.2 meters off the length in the rear.
Only on the ground floor.
On the ground floor.
Yeah. So what it would do is it would bring the actual building, other than the nib wall, in line with the length of 17 meters. Two-and-a-half story. It depends how you want to look at it. Some people. Exactly. So legally, it's called a two-and-a-half story. Depends how you want to look at it, but legally, it's two and a half. I'm sorry? They are. That is correct. That is correct. So in front of me, I have some diagrams, and I've given you some 3D views of the house. And what's really, really important to sort of understand is if you look at the 3D models that we've created, the attic or the third floor, however you want to look at it, we've stepped it back to reduce the impact of the height of the building on the street. So you only actually end up seeing a small portion when it's set back. From the very day one, when we were designing this house, the neighbors asked us not to put any balconies in the rear of the building. So we put them into the front of the building, and there's two of them. There's one on the second floor, and then there's one on the third floor. We've reduced the size of the actual deck on the second, on the half-story or the third story. We've reduced that. We didn't reduce the one on the second floor. That stays as it is. And if you look to the right of that balcony on the second floor, you see that wing wall? That's the wing wall that's created the building to be longer than it typically would be. Now, if you look at the other diagram, there's another diagram.
So if you didn't have that wing wall, if the wing wall were cut back, you comply with the bylaw, and it's a new build?
No, it would still be, according to the drawings that we have right now, it'd still be around 19 meters or somewhere around there.
If you were not successful in having variance number two approved, sorry, Michael.
Yeah.
If you were not successful in having variance number two approved, the effect on your design would be the removal of that little protruding wing wall?
Yeah, but neighbors don't actually have a problem with that, according to the meetings.
Okay, thanks.
But what I'm willing to do is to remove four feet or 1.2 meter on the ground floor so that you no longer get a stepping. You would get a two-story rear wall as of right, if you don't count the wing wall. And then the half-story would still be set back another 1.2 meters anyway. So it sort of sits within inside what a roof would typically look like. It's just that we've chopped the roof and created that front look at the front, and in the rear, there's less of that. It's just a window in the rear.
And the drawings you've just given us, is the red on the elevation, the front elevation, is the red the existing building?
No, the red is as of right. Yes.
The existing building is two stories of pitched roof, right?
Yes, it is. It's a very, very low pitched roof. It almost appears to be a flat roof, but it is actually a pitched roof on the existing building, which is on one of the photographs that I handed to you. There are plenty of examples of two-and-a-half-story buildings within the neighborhood. If you go from that picture there, the middle house is the one that we're removing. If you go to the next picture, which is 9 Douglas, which is across the road, you'll see a two-and-a-half-story, which is directly across the road. And I can't actually verify the height, but I used measurements of the front door and then used mathematics to show that that height of that roof there is about 32 feet or 9.75 meters in height. So we don't stand out within the neighborhood as far as an overly high house. We are on the upper side of high houses, but we're definitely not monstrous in that regard. There are a couple of other, there are a couple of other bylaws that we are encroaching on. The side yard setback, for example, is required at 1.2. We are 0.3 minimal, in some cases, a little bit more. If you look at the site plan as well, you'll also notice that we've jogged the building on the right-hand side because one of the other requests was not to have any overlooking windows within the neighbor's side yard setbacks. So that jogging actually creates privacy for the neighbor to the right, which is a neighbor here. On the other side, initially, we had discussions with the owner, and he had no issues with a three-foot setback. That's actually now come up to question where maybe he did have questions about the side yard setback, and actually does require a 1.2 meter. So that's why counsel is here today. We have some other issues as well, mostly to do with the typical sidewall height of a building, being larger than the seven meters that's required. But to me, that's usually a typical kind of scenario when you're dealing with a two-and-a-half story house. We have attempted to reduce the appearance of the half-story by moving it over on the right-hand side of the building. It's moved over from the front property line by about seven and a half feet. As it goes towards the back, it becomes three feet because the property is actually a rear reverse pi shape. It's an unusual shape for the property. So that also helps with why we've actually jogged the rear and the sides of the building, just to give those setbacks.
You've sort of used up your time. We're going to give you some rebuttal time, but I think it's time. I think we understand your proposal, and it's time to hear from.
I need one thing clarified. You've talked about reducing it by 1.2 meters. That does not reflected in the materials you just gave us, obviously.
No, it's not reflected, and it doesn't really impact any of the neighbors, other than the fact that it gives them some relief. So.
The length and depth of the building.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
It's going back quite a bit compared to the neighbors on either side, so that's why I asked.
Yeah, exactly.
1.2 meters is not on the site plan you just gave us, the reduction.
No, but it is shown as the first step. The first step in the rear is shown as 1.2. Could I approach?
Sure, if you don't mind showing me, because I'm.
1.2 meters. That's this piece here, which is the first story. This is just a sort of my question for you to read.
Yeah, thank you. I thought it was just me that was saying. So this is taking 1.2 meters off. I don't know if.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Would that affect any of the other variances? Probably, right?
No. How would it affect any of the variances?
Well, there's lot coverage variance. That's what I mean. There would be other variances impacted as a result. I mean, there's an FSI variance.
It would use coverage by 75 square feet, and it would use GFA by 75 square feet. I can give you those numbers as far as what's 75 square feet is.
Proposals before us, you're making those proposals today.
I don't know. That's why I was confused.
So can you give us all the changes to the variances so that we have the right numbers? Okay?
And does the neighbor agree with this?
All right. So would you get us those numbers, and we'll hear from the neighbors in the meantime. Thank you. Are you the spokesman, sir, for the neighbors? Are you the spokesman?
Good morning. I'm counsel to Maxim Efansayev, the owner of 2 Douglas Crescent. The spokesman for the neighborhood association is Mr. Jeff Hannamar.
So you're the spokesperson for, you represent 2 Douglas. Can you give us your name and address here?
Yes. So I have a card. My name is Alex Lusty, L-U-S-T-Y.
An agent, an architect?
I am a lawyer, so I'm counsel. And the address is the 10th floor, 425 Adelaide Street West. Davies Howe.
You're applying from the west side of the park.
Correct. So the changes are news to me from about 10 minutes ago. I don't have instructions on those changes, though I'm sure, you know, any reduction would be a welcome reduction.
Those discussions not discussed, those matters not discussed outside?
They were. I don't have instructions on those, and I just received the changes, as you did moments ago, so I.
You didn't discuss the changes inside?
We did. But that, just because I discuss changes, doesn't mean that I have the proper instructions on them. Okay. So I just wanted to start with, 4 Douglas is one of the smallest lot, if not the smallest lot on the street, and it's also a reverse pi shape, and that creates some constraints that you need to consider when designing for these lots. And when we look at the density that has been requested, we don't have revised numbers, but we have density, and that expresses itself in the maximum lot coverage and the FSI number. What the FSI number leaves out is the livable basement, and if that's included on the drawings that I saw, which are the ones before you, the FSI comes to about 1.28. And just to put that into perspective, the closest neighbor, the closest partner to donate is 1.25 at Moore and Bayview, and you can see it. It's the orange, and there's some to the north. some to the north. And the picture that I've included, just identifying those properties for you in the red circles. And that's just to sort of give a visualization, give a visualization to the sort of density that is being requested.
You're trying to show us that at 1.28, it's equivalent to these apart, like?
It's closer.
But my question is, let's say, look, let's look at the other Douglas Crescent.
Correct, so I've done that as well.
Do those properties compare apples to apples, apples to oranges? Do those properties also include the basement or don't include the basement?
Well, and that's the thing.
When it's out of the ground, but this basement, I guess, doesn't qualify because it's below ground.
Right, and the reason why it's excluded in the zoning bylaws is because most times the basement is not used for living accommodation. Usually, you find it unfinished, and so if you're going to be living in it, then the...
What do you mean, like family room, billiard room, sauna?
Right, correct. There's a bed, right, there's a bedroom in the basement of this dwelling.
I would imagine that's pretty typical for large homes in Rosedale and in this area.
Okay.
So I'm just trying to understand why you're telling us, and I appreciate with 1.28.
It just has to go to...
Are the other homes on Douglas also, are their basements included or excluded?
I'm not sure. I haven't been into the other homes. But when you include the basement in the livable space, suddenly, a three-story dwelling is more like a four-story dwelling in terms of intensity and FSI. And I looked at other applications on Douglas Crescent in the last 10 years. Of those, there are 10, only five requested density variances at all. Three of those are between 0.6 and 0.7. The largest one is 0.825. That's 39 Douglas Crescent. That backs onto a creek, unlike here where you have the lots all converging together in the middle. So the 9.37, which will likely get reduced, is unprecedented in the area. The building length will change. I mean, I'm hesitant to address that and take your time if the changes are being made, so maybe I'll pass over that for now until we find out.
Going back and forth.
That's, that's the problem. Okay, so then if the building length is as requested, it eats into the amenity area, and you start to see compensation for that being required, which is why there's a third story balcony being requested at two times the minimum, or the maximum permitted space for that. And what happens with the building length, if it, if it doesn't get changed, is that starts to erode the space available for water permeation, which the official plan does say is an important thing. And so just turning to the height.
Just going back to that last point, Mr. Lusty, Mr. West has indicated that but for this little nib wall, which I assume if we gave approval, we could tie it to plans to show they don't exceed, then in fact, other than that nib wall, he complies with the 17 meter.
If the changes are made, yes.
Right.
So I was addressing not changes because I don't know what's before you, which is the unfortunate outcome of this type of negotiation at a committee.
Yeah, we really don't like these changes on the side.
I share that, and I understand. And you have multiple height variances, and it's been referred to as a 2.5 story. If you look at the drawing set, it clearly says floors one, two, and three. The difference with the houses across the street are, they are a peaked roof, a gable roof, not a mansard roof. And so what you end up with is a higher intensity, more FSI with this style of roof, because you can actually use more of the third story for living in. And that causes some, there are windows in the third story looking out over both side yards and at the front. So that introduces some overlooked conditions into the neighborhood, which are a little bit uncharacteristic. So, and at this density in the heart of this neighborhood, given the past approvals in this location, it's out of character and so not desirable. And I just want to raise, this is the last point, is the west side yard setback. So it's currently proposed at 0.91 meters from 1.2 meters, and it worsens already difficult conditions. And so that's why it's not minor. I know that my client has a setback of 0.62 or 0.63, depending on how hard you want to squint, but that's the existing condition. It's not like that's being intentionally applied for today. And the official plan is pretty clear in the neighborhoods. You design to the context you're given. So the side yard variance also, there is a risk of impeding access to the rear yard for maintenance or construction down the road. It's interesting, we spoke, I heard a little bit about laneway suites. When the laneway suites' most recent report came out, the fire department said they wanted a meter for clearance to the backyards for safety reasons, life safety reasons. That's not being applied for, so. And those work at, the side yard works at cross purposes to the purposes of a side yard variance, which is to allow for access, allow for sunlight penetration, and allow for a degree of separation. And the last thing is that city planning, when they wrote in February 22nd, 2019, asking for a rationale on why these variances are being requested, I haven't seen a written report justifying the variances. And the comment from city staff at that time was, and I quote, "It seems you are trying to fit quite a lot into this one development, and as a result, the variances do not come across as minor. Can you please provide some rationale as to why each minor variance is minor and appropriate having regard for the applicable tests?" And I submit that I haven't seen such documentation, and I don't know that it exists. And those are my submissions. I'm happy to answer any questions arising. It's February 22nd, 2019. It's an email, and I can probably...
All right, thank you. Is there another person who wishes to speak?
Hello, my name is Jeff Hannemeyer. I'm the secretary treasurer of the Governor's Bridge Rate Pairs Association. I met along with a number of concerned neighbors in the area. Specifically, there are seven residents who live right around the project, including both adjacent neighbors and then other ones either across the street or very close by. We wrote a letter of objection basically to about half of the variances overall, but it really comes down to just three that we have the most concern with. One was on the building length. If you look at the first diagram, you can see in red that the building length, as proposed, has the back of the house protrudes much further into the backyards than other ones in the area. Unlike other variances, the building length is not proportional to the, to the depth of the lot. So already, 17 meters will allow the house to be quite a bit deeper than the other ones that are there. However, if the applicant reduces the length of the building by 1.2 meters, that would satisfy our concerns. There would still be a variance, but it's effectively because of that nib wall at the front. The effective depth of the house will be down to 17 meters then. The next one is actually with the, I would just, actually, sorry. We just echo the concern on the west side. If I could just speak with, in feet in this case, it is true that there are a lot of houses that have three-foot side yards, but that's because they have three-foot side yards on both sides. You end up with six feet between the houses. In this case, the house on the west only has a two-foot side yard. So that's why in this case, we did object to going down to three feet on that side, because you end up with only five feet between the houses, which is not in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood. Now, Said, the owner of the property on the other side, has been so gracious as to say he'd be happy with accepting a two-foot side yard on his side and shift the whole property, whole house over a foot to appease the neighbor on the west. So that is, is something that, that he would be in agreement with shifting the, the whole house over by a foot. And then the last area is with the height of the house. The diagram that the applicant put on showing the perspective of the house and showing that the, the third floor is not going to be very visible, that'd be relatively true when you're standing right in front of the house. But as you get away from the house, either further down the sidewalk or looking at it from the other side, or even when you're driving by, you're going to see that roof much more. It's going to be much more obvious than the sloped roofs that you see on, on the side. It is, it is set back, but it's going to look like, more like a three-story house. So we, we were, we have no problem with a, with a height variance. It was an issue of how far. And that's why we thought an overall height variance of a one meter extra as opposed to the current variance, which is only calling for another foot beyond that on the overall height, but it also has the sidewalls, sorry, the exterior main wall heights have a variance of 2.2 meters. And that's what, you know, so we, our group has said that if they bring the overall height of the building down by another foot, we'll accept the much higher exterior sidewalls, allowing it, allowing them to maintain their, their, their third-story look. The applicant referred to a house across the street being, I think it was a 9.25 meters, I think you said, but that's only at a very peak. In this case, they're looking at the height being the whole, basically, flat roof. So it has a much greater impact on the appearance of the house than just a single peak. All right, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Mr. West?
I, one of my first pushbacks on this is I'm not sure we're talking about the basement on this house. Basement is not considered to be GFA, so I was a bit confused by that part. Regarding the length of the building and the soft landscaping, the percolation, all of my numbers work with the city requirements as far as variances for soft landscaping. One meter side yard setback is not required in a single-family home because the front entrance is actually the access and the exit for the house as far as fire is concerned. We are looking at the notion of reducing the ground floor only by the 1.2 meters. I have the new numbers here for you.
Tell us what variances they relate to.
Yeah, I will.
You see, this redesigning on the fly stuff really is problematic.
It can be, yes.
It's behind, it's now almost.
It can be, and I apologize.
I'm just saying it's, it's, you know, these things should be worked out and presented in advance. You've had a lot of time.
I have a very difficult client.
Even as the council's letter that everyone's trying to work together, which is great.
Yes, exactly. I mean, that's the end result, is we're trying to work together. So item number one, it has to do with lot coverage. It would be reduced down to, as opposed to 151 meters squared, it would be reduced down to 172, 147.52 meters squared.
What's the percentage associated with that?
I haven't worked that part of it out, I apologize. Do you want me to continue, or do you want that number?
Might as well continue.
Seems like a small amount.
Yeah, exactly.
No, there's not a big reduction.
The maximum permitted building length, but it becomes as of right as far as the length of the building.
Let's hear the...
6.95.
Yeah, a couple of meters, from 151 to 147.
75 square.
Three and a half meters.
Three and a half meters?
Four meters.
No, 6.95 square meters. It's four feet by the width of the back of the building.
We're still talking about the lot coverage in variance one, right?
Yeah, so I've reduced.
147.52 from 151, and you have to tell us what that is expressed as a percentage.
Oh, sorry, I thought you wanted me to continue.
Well, your associate can do work, but just keep going through the variances, please.
Yeah, that's what, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. The next one talks about the length of the building at 20.05. It would end up being 18.85, including the wing wall, of course. I need a percentage. The depth of the building, which is number three, three, would stay at 18.85 meters. And then the FSI, which is number four, would be reduced down to 308.14 square meters as opposed to?
315.09.
315.09. And my colleague over there is working out those percentages. Granted, they wouldn't be a huge amount, but it would reduce the house to what is the allowable building mass of 17 meters, as well as the, including the front nib wall. So it would actually work out with what variances typically call for. As far as the side yard.
Just for the death of the word.
Yeah.
The rest of them are still.
That's correct. As far as the, the side yard setback, a three-foot setback as opposed to a four-foot setback has, in my experience, always been something that's considered to be acceptable, especially considering.
Number eight.
Talking variance eight. It's already been reduced.
I'm not reducing anything to do with the height. All I did was reduce.
Side yard, the side yard setback.
Side yard, yes.
Number eight.
We're going by the list, we don't go by the zoning review, we go by the...
You're going by the bylaw notice?
Yes.
Or, yeah? So that would be number seven, which is the required minimum side yard setback.
You have to use numbering on the, on the notice?
On the notice.
Not on the...
Okay.
Yeah, so it's variance eight, it's 0.91, 0.92, 0.929. You're revising that further?
That would be number nine, I believe.
I'm very sorry. But the public notice that was circulated and the call that I had from August 4th, 2019 says that it's number nine for the side yard.
I agree.
I'm not sure how to...
Well, because it looks like it was revised. There was a revision.
No, ours is different.
Yeah, there was a revision. So he's already reduced it.
Like, oh.
That's our number eight.
Yeah, it shows on ours, on, on ours as being number nine as far as the side yard setback, and that's not changing. Typically, it'd be 1.2 meters. In this case, we're asking for 0.9 as the minimal, although it does change a little bit, but it's minimal of 0.9 on both sides.
We have it currently as 0.929 from the east side lot line and 0.91 from the west side lot line. That was revised. This is a revised notice, so somehow that got changed. It was previously 0.922 and 0.9.
Yeah, I have 0.929 and 0.91 here as well.
That's what we're working with, so that's...
That's not changing, no, that's not changing.
So you thought you're only telling us the ones that are changing? That ain't changing.
No. And likewise, the height is not changing either. So the only thing we have changed is we brought the building back, so it's as of right as far as the actual mass of the building at 17 meters, but at the end of the day, it actually works out to 18.85 meters because of the wing wall, yes. Yeah, I'm just waiting.
Basically, what you've changed is variance numbers one, two, and three, and four, and we're waiting to find out what the percentages are on variance one and variance four.
Been achieved by reducing the ground floor by 1.28 only.
Right. Yeah, this is like, you know. This is a hearing, it's not a meeting over a conference table to try to work out our differences here.
Sir, Mr. West, how long are you going to be? Because we don't have, we've got.
Coverage?
Roomful of people.
Coverage is 42.7%.
42.7, that's variance number one?
Yes.
Again, a minimal reduction. You're taking off seven square meters, so.
Do they have the numbers here?
In any event, it's a small reduction of seven, seven feet, seven square meters or something.
Yeah, 6.95, to be precise.
Okay, so the, the floor spin since the .937, where six is permitted, is going to reduce to, it's...
Still going to be 930 and change.
Yeah.
It's over nine, it's going to be...
Yeah, 0.93.
By rough calculation...
All right, thank you, sir.
Point nine one.
From .937.
Thank you, sir, we're going into committee unless anyone has any further questions.
Actually, I have one more comment. We've talked about neighborhood character and the fact that our house doesn't match length of houses. We have another variance that is way longer than our house within the immediate neighborhood. I can bring it up.
Should have brought that up in your main presentation. You're in rebuttal now, so...
It's Jeff's house, actually. So, it's this gentleman over here. His house is 27.09 meters long. That's the longest length. His actual house is 19.01 meters, or 20.67, depending on where you measure it.
I mean, it's relevant to the lot and surrounding houses as well, so...
It is, but it's all bylaws. That's what I'm doing.
Jeff's house is a different, we heard this is a relatively small lot, it's reverse pi, so to tell us now in rebuttal what Jeff's house is, is...
And his side yard setback is 0.3.
It doesn't do much for your case.
Sorry, 0.9.
Thank you, Mr. West, we're going to make a...
Thank you.
No further questions, does somebody have a motion?
Can I just add one comment about the...
No, I'm sorry, we're, we've had enough.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm actually impressed by a comment that one of these gentlemen made, which was, what needs to be designed to the context? And I think that's correct. And the context of this particular site suggests that the, in my view, what's being proposed is more than the site can reasonably handle. I think, I think minor revisions to the bylaw as variance might be reasonable if there was a reason within the site context that would suggest that you had to do that in order to produce a, a building that otherwise complements the neighborhood. I don't think we have that here. I am not convinced by the third floor. I think that the third floor, and one of the gentlemen as well, mentioned that the issue about height is misleading as well, because the heights that are being referred to as examples are pitch drews where you have a triangular space as the bulk, whereas in this house, the, the top floor is a larger, a larger mass by virtue of it being a sort of mansard roof. I will say that the presentation by the applicant was, was good and fruitful, and the drawings he's provided are, are helpful, but I, for one, am not convinced that this is a reasonable house on this lot, particularly given the height of the building, and I am going to move that the application be refused.
Yes.
As amended, yes.
Do I have a second?
I'm going to second the refusal. I have concerns about the height as well, and, and even with the minor change to the length and depth of the dwelling, I still feel that all the other variances are a large reach in comparison to what is a neighboring properties. And I also like to point out that this is a small lot, smaller lot in the context of the rest of the area. So, you've given us photos of other houses, they're on bigger lots, in my view, so I don't think, I think there's too much being proposed here for the size of the lot and the context of the surrounding neighborhood, so I'm supporting the motion for refusal.
Fall in favor. Application refused. Line number two, 34 Balsam Avenue. Purpose of this application, to construct a new three-story detached dwelling with an integral garage. We have before us in this application material submitted by the applicant, staff reports from planning and urban forestry, support from 30 Balsam, and three form letters in support and opposition from three addresses on Balsam Avenue. Your name, sir?
My name is Jonathan Hatch, I'm the agent for the owners at 34 Balsam Avenue.
Neighbors on this application, please join us at the front of the room on the left, right side of the horseshoe, our left side. Thank you.
So, before I begin, I'd like to submit one extra letter of support.
Another letter of support from 38 Balsam Avenue.
So, you can see from the photo up at the board, that's the original house. My clients wish to recreate the, the style of the existing home and maintain the streetscape of the neighborhood while also designing a new home to fit their needs. You can see some of the other houses in the, on the street that are quite large and similar in styled, but also en massing. We also have another photo, Balsam Avenue is a mixed-density street with a variety of styles and forms. Our proposal would not be out of character for this street. The design, while, while requiring several variances, may require new variances or reduction of the current house failings in regards to setbacks. Variance one is for our proposed canopy with a setback of .2 to the south yard. This is a very modest overhang in keeping with the traditional roof style. Variance two is for the front deck stair. You'll notice on your plans that they're actually turned away from the street, reducing the visual impact. This is meant to be a family home that is only two steps down to grade. The idea is we don't want the children to be jumping off the deck without at least some stairs. Variance three is for roof eaves. The current eaves on the north side actually encroach over the property line. We seek to remedy this by increasing the side yard, so we will be changing variance... variance number nine, the side yard setback of .1 from the north side to .3. This will allow our eaves to, to no longer encroach over the property line, so this would be an improvement over the original. Variance four is for the proposed height of 9.95 in lieu of 9.5. No, this variance is for the rear main walls. We actually comply facing the street, so you'll notice we have a, a front-facing gable facing the street. So, we, this, we designed the house to have a reduced roof line to the rear so that each level is stepped back and stepped back and stepped back, reducing the impact to the neighbors. Variance five is also for height, 11.27 on the north and south sides. As you know, this is main parowal height, so if you want a, a traditional home with side-facing gables, you end up incurring this, this variance. Variance six is for depth of 18.35. This is only for the ground floor. The second and third floors are setback, 1.63 into 7.2 meters. In our research, we found applications ranging as high as 22.96 to 18.59. We fall well within the standard at 18.35. Variance seven is for a GFA at .89 in lieu of .6. Houses south of Queen have typically been growing larger to accommodate the changing family needs. In our research, we found numerous applications that have been approved well above 1.0 with approval average rating of .98. We fall below the standard at .89, with the largest home on the street at .9. Variance eight is for the front yard setback. This is an existing setback. We are actually matching the original second-floor addition that is there and filling in below it. So, we, and then extending it with a veranda that is common on the street, a veranda that faces the front of the street. We have four letters of support, including the, one of the immediate neighbors, and we have spoken to planning and they are on, they're in, we are in agreement with the conditions that they've set out.
Yeah, unit number nine, that was reduced?
That was reduced from .1 to .3.
My question is, what's the existing? I appreciate your...
It's .1.
So, it's, okay, so you're making it better than...
So, we're making it better than the existing. It also solves some of our encroaching eve problems.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a spokesperson from the opposition?
Yes, my name is Eric Tripp, I'm the owner of 42 Balsam, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the owners of number 36 and number 40 Balsam, plus one of the tenants in number 36 Balsam. I'll try and be brief. The four points that I really wanted to raise here, number one relates to process. There is virtually no consultation with the neighbors as this...
That doesn't help us. I know some of our members take objection to the fact of no consultation, but that time's passed. If we can deal with the impact on your property and your neighbor's property, that's what we'd like to concentrate on this morning.
Okay, so, I guess the, the major issues here are the precedent for the community. There's nine variances being required here. Six of the nine, if they're looked at closely, are what I would consider to be excessive. And the end result is, there is a, a home that is, you know, being proposed here that is outsized relative to the, to the lot, and is going to have a negative impact on the, on the area. And there are also two trees, massive trees that are located on the front of the lot. We're told that they are not going to be impacted by the proposal. We actually are suspicious of that, given how close to the trees the construction is, is going to take place.
Sir, the owner will have to work with the urban forestry to protect those trees.
Understand that.
Is the condition number one being proposed?
Yeah.
So, anything else?
You, you mentioned you had four major concerns, so consultation, which is one?
Yeah, yeah, so consultation, which was inadequate, and, you know, not in keeping with what's required of the community. I think number two is the, the precedent and the number of excesses, the six of nine, which I would consider to be major. Number three, concern about the trees. Number four, we've been through this before on the street, there was an exactly identical situation on number 44 to the north of us. They came to committee and, and was denied several years ago, and it's an identical situation to this one.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Can I just ask a question? You said there were six of nine that you feel are, of the variances that are problematic for you?
Yep, those were...
Can you just generally speaking...
So, number two, and this was contained in, in my letter, number two is a 62% variance, number three is a 78%, number five, 19%, number seven, 48%, number eight, 33%, and number nine...
We, we look at impact more than specific numbers.
Okay.
In terms of percent, I know...
I think that's, that's completely...
You look at mine, or that's what comes to mind, but we look more at impact.
Okay, to me, I guess it's a matter of how you look at it. To me, that is very impactful, those excesses, those are major, in my, in my view. Just, I would say one, one more thing about process. All these letters of support, many of them have been organized by the real estate agent that actually represented the new owner. We have never met the new owner. Two of the letters of support have come in from clients of Hatch and Associates that are working on a project down the street, so I'm very suspicious about the process of support.
In any way, you're here as one of the immediate affected neighbors, you're here speaking on behalf of 36 and 40, who are more immediate. I don't know about the people in the rear, but the issue in terms of percentage, my question would be, he's, he's advised that they're looking for .89, I think, here, or is that, is that typical? Rather than looking, what's the percentage over the .6 allowable, more interested in how does that fit in with the, the street generally, in your opinion? Is that, in terms of .89 being excessive, what are the other, what's your house at?
I, I don't know. Well, my house is actually in accordance with all the bylaws, and we did a, we did a renovation three years ago and didn't come here.
Okay, so I'm not, I want to put, rather than talking about percentage increase over what's permitted, you feel .89 is excessive?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I clarify one other point? You mentioned that there's another house close by, that, or there was a proposal close by that's identical to this that was turned down. It was identical in terms of, it was, looked the same, or the...
In terms of the, the...
Variances that were being requested were the same as these?
In terms of the number of variances.
Number of variances or the actual size?
I don't know if the actual specific numbers, every number as cited here were identical, conceptually identical in the sense of there was a very large number of variances that were requested and a very excessive amount for each of the variances that were requested.
But it wasn't exactly these numbers?
Not exact, no, no, not exactly these numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'll be brief, my name is Paul Martin, I live at number 40 Balsam. This is, the proposed house is a, is a very big house. The third floor, bedroom, full bath, bedroom, full bath. Second floor, master bedroom, master bath, bedroom, full bath, two walkout closets, laundry. The ground floor, great rooms, study, dining room, kitchen, butler's pantry, washroom, mudroom.
We understand it's a big house.
Yeah, and that's my only point, that all these other easements they're requesting flow from number seven, which is 48% above the allowed limit of 2,225 square feet or 206.71 square meters.
So, sir, you're, you're, do you know what your FSI is, that you're less than .89 at number 40, a couple of doors away?
I know, and I'm below .69. And I venture to say that most houses are below .69, with the exceptions that Mr. Hatch possibly can bring out that he hasn't produced to us, we don't know that.
All right, thank you, sir.
Mr. Hatch, in your rebuttal, could I ask you to speak to two things? I know the chairman said that lack of consultation is, is something that passed. I'm still interested in, if that is the case, why there was no pre-consultation, because pre-consultation frequently results in there not being opposition because matters could be dealt with. So, if there wasn't any reach out to the community, and that's mentioned a number of times in the material and the agenda, why was that the case? And secondly, with regard to the trees that are to be retained, they're not on your site plan, can you show me where they are, and do we have your understanding that they will be retained?
Yes, so let me start with the first question, which is in regards to consultation. We did reach out to many of the neighbors. Unfortunately, we, I did request of my owners or my clients to reach out to as many people in the neighborhood as possible, it's always been part of our process. However, they seem to have reached out to some of the neighborhood, but not all of the neighborhood, which is support...
What about the adjacent neighbors?
So, we do have one adjacent neighbor in support, as well as a number of the neighbors to the south, and then most, most of these neighbors are also to the north, but we also have one neighbor, two houses to the north at number 38, so we also have number 32. So, we, we do have support in the neighborhood.
Not the two adjacent neighbors?
We only have one of the two adjacent neighbors.
So, your client?
Who do you, who, 32?
Sorry, we have...
Mr. Tripp is 42, he's here on behalf of 36 and 40, and we heard from Mr. Martin at 40.
He has 32.
32, okay. In any event, so, were those immediate neighbors the ones that were consulted, or were there other people?
We did consult other people, including across the street, but none others ended up raising any concerns or speaking out to the committee. In regards to the tree, there is a condition attached, as you know, from urban forestry. We have no desire to remove the large trees that are in the front yard. Sorry? So, you can see by the, the trees in the front, those are all to be maintained. There is one very small tree that's less than .1 of a meter, so, that's along this, beside the existing interlock that isn't shown. the existing interlock that isn't shown on the plan but is on the survey, but that is not a protected tree. But we are seeking to maintain all of the protected trees in the lot. Now, in regards to some of the other items that they've listed, the, as you know, precedent isn't before the committee. Each... You do grant all of your decisions based on per-lot basis, so I don't believe that we would be setting a precedent for the street. In regards to... We do have new plans, so committee... Sorry, planning did request us to submit plans. It was actually attached to the report, but they also requested us to submit plans to you, so they're actually the same plans, but we're going to submit them to you today.
Mr. Hatch, I don't think this is an appropriate time to be submitting new plans.
My apologies. They were attached to the planning report, and we would be... And we are in agreement with the condition that's attached. They just requested us to submit the plans. My apologies, I didn't submit it earlier. Now, in regards to GFA for the lot, this is... Would be a large house in the lot, but as you can see from the first bank of photos, this would not, in terms of massing on the street, would not be a house that is unusual for the street. In fact, it would be well within the... This character of the neighborhood. I mean, especially, look at number fifty Balsam. We're actually matching the style and characteristic of that house quite... We're right smack on. It's two side-facing gables and one large-facing gable towards the front with white sidings. We're proposing many of the same things as this house. The one at forty-four Balsam, you can see that's an even larger house with a side garage. We are seeking to do something not quite as large as forty-four Balsam, but we are seeking to maintain the character of the neighborhood, and point eight-nine is not unusual for the neighborhood. In fact, it is less than many of the houses in the neighborhood, and less than the ones... Than the largest on the street.
Sir, we don't have a discussion, okay? Please? I was just looking at the geographic map to look at, see if the lots are all similar, Also, I note, you know, in terms of the size of the house, I note that then I think Mr. Martin went through that. The second floor has a large, very large master and another second bedroom, which is also very large, and then you have two smaller bedrooms on the third floor. You're obviously showing a deck, which I'm not sure is... Looks like it's more than point four, but I guess it's... I don't know if there's an exemption for that, because it's not...
We don't specifically have any variances for the deck.
There's no variance for that deck?
No, no, but we did have the... When we spoke to the neighbors to the north, they were receptive to putting a one-point-five-meter privacy barrier on the north side at the third-floor level.
Is there a motion?
No, it's not. This was just discussed before the hearing. As well, it's also noted in the... One of the support letters for the neighbor at thirty-two.
So, it's one-point-five-meter?
A privacy, a frosted...
Along the wall?
Along the north wall, or north side.
There's no further questions. Do we have a motion? Thank you, sir.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
No. I'm not sure how my colleagues are weighing out on this one, but personally, from my view, I feel like this is, in context of the houses surrounding the property, we've got smaller houses, we've got semis, we've got number thirty-six, which looks like a smaller house. The current house, according to the site plan and survey, already looks larger than a lot of the houses in the immediate context, and I feel like the proposal is a lot larger than what currently exists. I have issues with the front, filling in the front and having the porch extend further than the neighboring houses. So, based on that and based on the proposed... The proposed floor space index, I feel that there's too much in terms of the variances, and they do not meet the four tests, so I'm bringing my motion forward for refusal.
I will second Ms. Valentini's motion for refusal.
I'll in favor of the motion. Your application's refused.
Hasn't it?
Yes.
Hasn't it?
Yeah.
Move on to number five. The purpose of this application is to alter the existing one-story detached dwelling by constructing a second-story addition, a front porch, a rear terrace, and a rear basement walkout. Before, as we had materials supplied by the applicant, emailed correspondence from planning. Your name, sir?
Good afternoon. My name is Javed Iqbal. I'm an agent and husband of the owner.
Are there neighbors on this application?
Yes. This is just a bungalow, two-bedroom, old bungalow, in a poor shape, so we are updating this one, and we are adding a second story on it with a four-bedroom.
Am I correct that this proposal mimics one immediately to the south?
Sorry?
This mimics an existing house that's just nearing completion immediately to the south.
Existing house?
It's exactly the same as the house that's immediately to the south.
Yes. You mean one-nineteen?
I don't know the number, the one that's immediately adjacent to it.
Not exactly. This is basically... The height is lower than that one.
How much lower?
That house is...
Carl, we have the decision committee. From two thousand seventeen, this committee, it's attached.
That is eight-point-eight-five meter.
Eight-point-eight-five, yeah.
Yeah.
And you're at...
Eight-point-five-nine. Basically, when we submitted an application to the planning, and planning advised us that, you know, we will not recommend to have the same height like one-one-nine, so then we revised our drawing and we reduced the height as per planning.
So, they told you they wouldn't accept what you... Was approved on one-one-nine at eight-point-eight-five, so you brought it down a bit lower?
Yes, because they were... I gave them a reason. I said, "How come the one-one-nine has built eight-point-eight-five, and you are not letting us?" They said that the neighborhood, the street, is going to be quite congested, so that's why we will suggest you to reduce whatever you can reduce. Then we reduced it to eight-point-five-nine.
And, sir, your lot coverage is lower than was approved at one-nineteen, forty-seven-point-two percent. You're at forty-one percent.
Yes.
Correct, okay. Perhaps we can hear from the neighbors, and he'll have a chance to respond.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do you have a copy for the applicant, too, please?
I was actually using them for here right now to show that I can give it to them.
Okay.
Sorry.
We only have two to share.
Well, if they're going to put on the overheads, all right.
Yeah, put it on the overhead, sure.
My name is Franca Savoya. I'm speaking for my mother, Noemi Bomarco, who is the owner of one-twenty-three Durant Avenue, which would be adjacent to the proposed one-twenty-one. I would like to read a statement that she made here, basically...
Can I just see? It says, "Ree one-twenty-three Durant." This application is one-twenty-one Durant, right?
Right, but I'm talking about the impact...
You're at one-twenty-three?
Yes, the impact on our house.
Oh, I see, okay, so it's the impact on you. I got it. Okay, thank you. And actually, if you could please touch on the fact that, you know, as we just heard from the applicant, and it's attached to our decision, we have a decision in one-nineteen on the other side is similar, slightly less than what he's applied for.
Right.
So, if you could please touch upon that in your presentation.
Okay. I'll do part, and then my sister will do part two. Okay. After examining the plans for the proposed development at one-twenty-one Durant Avenue, my mother, I have serious concerns regarding the following requested variances. They are numbers two, four, five, and six. In addition to the above bylaw variances, I oppose the proposed plan to build a second-story addition over the garage. I would like to begin by pointing out that in the site plans submitted with this application, one-twenty-three Durant Avenue is incorrectly labeled as a two-story dwelling. The dwelling at one-twenty-three Durant Avenue is a single-story bungalow. My primary concern is that the proposed dwelling at one-twenty-three... Sorry, at one-twenty-one Durant Avenue will block natural light from entering the south side of my house, particularly my kitchen, the room in which I spend the major part of my day. To date, twenty-one two-story additions or dwellings have been constructed on Durant Avenue between Mortimer Avenue and Judith Drive. Attached is a list of the new or renovated houses with accompanying photographs of the new dwellings and the adjacent single-story dwellings. It can be seen from the photographs that the majority of the homes in the areas have driveways and/or garages located on the same side of the house as the kitchen, as opposed to the living room, dining room side of the house. This ensures that there is a minimum of eight-plus feet from the kitchen window to the property line. I mentioned... So, I measured the driveway at my mother's property, and it is nine feet, eight inches. So...
If you could please have the bottom one. She's two houses away.
Yes.
The one that's under consideration today.
Yes, yes.
The one that's like...
Yes. The next one over here, you can see this is the one that's been approved. But if you could go back to the previous photo, I just wanted to show that most of the houses, if you look at where the garage is on the bungalow, it's on the same side as the door, and the kitchen's behind the door. So, if a large building is built next to it, it's got the driveway or the garage to protect. It just has space between that and the new construction. For some reason, there are six houses on Durant that do not have that, and ours is one of them. You can see at the very bottom that the driveway and the garage is located on the dining room side. So, if one-twenty-one does build, as they propose, we will have a tall wall there, and it'll block virtually all the light entering to the kitchen area.
Could you show us the next photograph showing one-nineteen? So, and this is going to be similar buildings?
Yes, yes. I think it's, what, thirty-five centimeters lower?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. And if you can see at one-seventeen Durant, above that, one-seventeen, they built a house, but it doesn't impact the bungalow beside it because of the garage. And if you look below it at one-twenty-seven, the bottom picture, again, there's a big house, but it doesn't impact the bungalow beside it, and they have... That house, one-twenty-seven, did not build over the garage, so they... You can see their van parked there.
Oh, that's the...
That's two doors up from our house?
That's the van that belongs to one-nineteen.
Yes, yes.
So, they didn't extend the whole way to the garage.
That's right, that's right.
One-nineteen.
Right, and going through the other photos, you can see that all of the houses are protected with respect to the light entering the house, natural light entering the house by the driveway or garage. They want exception there, ninety Durant Avenue. They have a house built right next to the bungalow, but the kitchen is on the opposite side where the garage is, so even if someone builds on the north side of them, they still have that area to protect the light entering the house. So, I am one of the handful of owners who driveway is not on the kitchen side of the house, resulting in a distance of only three feet from the kitchen window to the neighboring property, i.e. the garage. This was not an issue when houses were originally constructed, since the properties were built with single-story, flat-roofed garages, which do not block light from entering a neighbor's house. An eight-point-five-nine-meter wall three feet from my window, rather than the eight-plus feet, as in the case of the other houses on Durant Avenue, will greatly impact my quality of life. My house...
Private driveway between your house and one-twenty-one?
The driveway belongs to one-twenty-one. Sorry, which driveway?
The driveway belongs to one-twenty-one.
And that's where they plan to build up.
Right. So, would your mother have a complaint if her living room was on that side?
No, that's the whole issue.
She spends her time in the kitchen like a good...
Whenever I visit her, we're at the kitchen table during the day. She reads, she plays her solitaire, whatever. She's at the kitchen table, and it would be very, very dark. So, she appeals to the committee of adjustments to take into consideration that due to the placement of her driveway, her situation is unique. She feels her house will no longer be a bright, sun-filled home to have the view of the sky and accompanying natural sunlight blocked. After enjoying years of viewing the sky and observing the sun's progression from the back of her house to the front will be depressing. The natural light issue is not trivial. I wish to point out that natural light is not an issue with the owners of the new two-story dwellings being constructed in the neighborhood. These dwellings are designed to maximize the amount of light entering the house. The main floor of new houses are usually open concept areas with the kitchen located at the back of the house, and plenty of light entering from both the front and back of the houses. Many new owners are opting for floor-to-ceiling windows to maximize light. On the other hand, the original single-story dwellings have the bedrooms, bathroom, and staircase to the basement located at the back of the house.
Madam, would you please wrap up? You're well over the...
Oh, okay.
I think we get your point.
All right.
Hi, I'm Carol Mosley, the other daughter of the resident at one-twenty-three Durant Avenue. You asked us to address the differences between this house and the other house. The agent is referring to the house that's been approved at one-nineteen as the new norm in the neighborhood. Unfortunately, at the time that the committee was meeting about one-nineteen Durant Avenue, the gentleman who lives at one-twenty-one Durant Avenue was critically ill, and his family was putting all their care and effort to maintaining his health as possible, and he died shortly thereafter.
So, this is a new owner?
This is a new owner, who actually approached the previous owners when one-twenty-one was being sold to ask if the variances could be part of the contract of sale, whatever the terminology is, and that did not happen at the time. The other thing to point out is that the house that was approved for one-nineteen does not match at all the character of the neighborhood. We have a lot of photographs, even the one at one-twenty-one, ties to keep in tie with the characters of the houses in the neighborhood, and that the size... of the houses in the neighborhood, and that the size allotment index is being increased from 4.5 to .89.
Yeah, you did, the two-story dwellings.
We did.
You mentioned, you know, I know they're bungalows. Things are changing in the city, properties are becoming very valuable to have bungalows, so.
I drove around the neighborhood.
Including your mother's home is going to become a two-story home.
So it's possible, it won't be in my lifetime, I will guarantee that. What we did notice, though, is because of the building of the garage, many of the houses that have been extended are extended over the dwelling itself and not part of the garage. We are asking that if they need to build a double-two-story addition, that it goes over. And the other thing, sorry, Frank, could you put the 119, the other one? It's, the height issue is a big deal, because as you can see, the height of the roof, that's, sorry, the height of the basement is being raised to the equivalent of the front door entry of the existing bungalow. So even though it's called a two-story dwelling, technically, it's almost three stories. The roof, the main floor starts where the addition, the second-story addition, starts where the roof is of the current house. So it's a monster house in a neighborhood. And as my final point for my mother, she bought that house because of the light, because of the neighborhood, because it was a beautiful setting, because she was joyful in her house with the sunlight. And if that building is allowed to be built the way it is proposed, that will be taken away from her. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
With due respect, so I spoke to my neighbors outside, and they have raised the same concern about the light since the, pretty much not 119, there are many houses on the street are being built pretty much the same height. So considering that, you know, time has been changing, and then old bungalows are being converted to the two-story dwelling, and even if I reduce, let's say, for example, a meter or even more than one meter of my building height, but still that does not solve that bungalow, their window, because still that will block the sunlight. So what suggestion I gave it to them, I said, you know, if you guys want, we can compensate you, your mom's kitchen with a skylight, so which is pretty reasonable, you can get the same skylight, so we can afford the expense for that, and we can get it replaced.
So what was your answer?
They don't know, they are saying that we need to speak to the mom, so if she accepts that offer. But that's the best option I can think of.
Can we rebut to that?
I have a question, I just noticed, I was looking at the approval for 119 Durant, next door in 2017, and there appears to be a floor space index of 1.18 under the old bylaw, and there doesn't seem to be a corresponding floor space index under the new bylaw. That bylaw was already in effect, so I'm a little confused if they're missing, missed the variance on that. I don't know if it would be the same number, if the definition under the old bylaw from 6752 is the same as the new bylaw, but there doesn't seem to be a floor space index in that there's a lot coverage, which you're coming in actually at less, but there doesn't seem to be a floor space index. So anyway, that's the other application, but you're, can you, you know, .89, in terms of, they've given us a list, it appears to be a neighborhood in transition, you have a number of two stories being topped up, as in many areas in the city. Do you know if the .89 is compatible to what the other two stories, or if it's, because I can compare it to what's at 119, because the number seems to be missing?
Yeah, the side yard setback for the other one is greater than this one, it seems like, not by much, but it is slightly, slightly greater. So it looks like your variance for side yard setback is .45 meters on the north side, which is adjacent to 123, that's correct?
123, yeah.
Whereas you'd need .9 meters, basically a meter, to comply with the bylaw?
Yeah.
I guess it's an existing condition, and they're building up, right? So it's an existing condition.
That's right, but it's the garage.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we are just using the same footprint, but we are building up, yeah.
Sorry, in my nervousness, I forgot to mention how they must use a walker, so she has to have clear access of her sidewalk at all times with the side door.
But he's. No.
And we understand that they were mentioning that, you know, while the construction, so she has a walker and she has, so I said that with due respect, so I will make sure while construction, your side of the walkway is, doesn't have any debris or mess, so it should be cleaned every day properly.
Okay, that's a construction issue, we don't get involved with that.
Okay.
We deal with the variances as a built form.
Any further questions, or can we have a motion? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm quite familiar with this street and the adjacent property to this, to this application, which I frankly find to be the most unfortunate piece of development I've recently seen. The combination of the property immediately adjacent to this application and its neighbor is to create a three-story solid wall, and I do not agree with my colleague that we have to assume that all bungalows in this city are going to be transferred to two-story dwellings. Well, or that, well, you did say that this lady's mother's house was going to be a two-story dwelling one day, and I don't know that that's true. If you look at the demographics of this city and of other cities, you'd find that we shouldn't be doing what we can to preserve bungalows where it's possible. I don't believe that is the case here, I don't think we can preserve the bungalow. But I would be very reluctant to approve variances that would see a replication of the building that's immediately south of this site, which is grossly oversized for its site, grossly oversized for the street. And the variances speak to that by asking for gross floor area, floor space index variances and height variances. So, Mr. Chairman, on that basis, and I don't know that, will this garner support, I'm unable to support this application, I recommend it be refused.
So I'm going to second the motion for refusal based on the side law setback that's being requested, a reduction from .9 meters to .45, given the objection from the neighbor at 123. I think a more generous side yard setback, although one may not solve all the issues, would help in this situation. I understand there's a house at 119 that came to this committee, and it looks like the side yard setback's slightly higher in that case. So I think based on the side yard setback, there is a trend, I see there's houses that are two stories along the way, and I think having the buffer where the garage is does help, so I'm going to support the motion for refusal based on the side yard setback.
Yeah, all in favor?
All opposed.
Application is refused, sir. You can appeal.
Seven, we have twelve.
We didn't do seven, did we?
We have seven, twelve. And O'Conner, we already. What happened to O'Conner?
We didn't do seven, right?
Okay, number seven, 173 First Avenue.
Good afternoon.
Just a minute, just a minute. The purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a two-story east-side addition with an integral garage. We have on this application, material submitted by the applicant, support, email correspondence from Transportation and Heritage, and we have a staff report from Heritage, and we have a 24 signature petition in support, and we have concern from 179 First Avenue. Your name, please, madam.
My name is Alan Abu-Nahle, I'm the agent of the owner for 173 First Avenue. We have minor variances, which is the minimum required dimension for the parking space is 3.2 meter in width and 5.6 meter in length. Our proposal is the measure 3.15 meter in width and 7.5 meter in length.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I don't know that we need you to read through all, I think we're familiar with the other. I have a question for you. There's a, there's a reference in the report from Heritage Preservation Services, you've seen that, and it refers to the potential for a fence along this corner property, and I don't know what that's about. Can you clarify what fence we're talking about and what it's for and so forth?
Okay, the fence.
You got a site plan you can put on the overhead that we can refer to? I don't know. I'm just, Heritage saw fit to mention it in their report, so I just needed to understand a little bit better what the issue is. I don't know.
Okay.
So we have, the fence we're talking about is right here.
All the way along the property line?
Where the property line is.
You have a fence now?
No, there is no fence.
Yes.
There is a fence.
There is a fence or there isn't a fence?
And it's along the entire property line?
Okay.
Okay, I didn't know where it was, that's all I needed to know, because Heritage wants to review it as part of their review of your application. Okay, thank you.
Can we hear from the neighbor now, and you will have a chance to rebut?
Hello, I'm Myrna Moore, I live at 177 First Avenue, and the.
Is that two doors away?
It's right across Tiverton Avenue, on the.
You live on Tiverton?
I live at the corner of, at the corner property across from this.
Oh, okay.
Tiverton and First form a T-intersection, which is not.
No houses between you, just a roadway?
Yes, just Tiverton. And Leslie and the Heritage Committee, I think, presented their case for not building a proposed second story above a garage, an integral garage, and so I won't speak on that any further. But I'm concerned, because I've lived at this address for 42 years, and I know the area very well. Tiverton is a dead-end street. They recently refurbished the Tiverton Parquet. It's extremely active with young families. There are people, like kids on scooters and skateboards and bicycles, and people walk in their dogs, and it's just very busy. And First Avenue is also quite a busy street, so busy that they installed the speed bumps, traffic speed bumps, to try to slow down the traffic. When, I would say that, having lived in this location for a very long time, that at least 50% of the cars that are coming down First Avenue turn onto Tiverton Avenue. That, the proposal with the solid board fence right at the sidewalk and the zero setback from the property line, in my opinion, would reduce the vision of cars coming down, going east on First Avenue and wanting to turn onto Tiverton Avenue. And because of the nature of the, the street and the number of children, you know, on the street, playing on the street, so on, I just, I'm concerned for the safety of the, of the visual.
How high is the fence?
Well, it says two meters is what they're proposing right at the sidewalk.
So the fence, so is this a new fence?
No, this is what they're proposing.
No, no, this is a fence that's going to be built, it's not an existing fence.
Yeah, it's what they're, it says proposed two-meter-high board privacy fence.
Proposed means it hasn't been built yet. Is there a fence on the property line now?
There is on the property line.
But it doesn't go out as far as to the corner, is it? You're concerned, I can understand your concern, your concern is sightlines of cars turning to the corner.
That's right.
So is the condition that's there now a problem, or is it, is there a fence, but it doesn't go all the way out, and you're concerned that the new fence will go out too far?
The current fence, you see where that little, little gate is?
Yes.
By the parking pad?
Yes.
The privacy fence that's there now, the board privacy fence goes to that point, and then from there to the, to the sidewalk, actually, I believe, it's, it's an open metal fence.
So your concern is that the new fence is going to have obstruct views more than current, okay, that makes sense, thank you.
So that's six meters, the new fence, this fence is how tall?
That the existing fence?
Yes.
Well, it's at least five feet, maybe.
Shorter.
It's, it's a high fence.
Have you had traffic problems at that corner?
Not to date, no.
You've lived there for 42 years?
Yes.
Can I ask a question? Since you're on the other side of Tiverton, on the same side as First, is your property built up to the zero lot line setback?
No.
It went by, I wasn't sure?
No. My property line is two feet to the, goes two feet to the west of the building.
But is that, is that your property, or is that like the city boulevard?
My property goes to two feet west of the existing west elevation.
Okay.
And then there's a city easement that's part of the road allowance.
So would you not have any objection to a new fence if it was built the same height as the old fence?
It's mainly, the traffic concern would be mainly about the visual, visual permeability of the corner. You know, that's, that a driver coming along First Avenue could see traffic going north on Tiverton Avenue.
I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but to move it on, I think, from what I've heard you say, both the, the proposed fence is too high, because seated in a car, you wouldn't be able to see the corner.
That's right.
And reducing it a little bit probably wouldn't help, the issue is, the fence is going to be an obstruction.
Yes.
We have a, I don't know if you know this, we have a report from Heritage, who's basically said that they would, they would be reviewing the location of any fencing as part of their approval of this property, and they very specifically said, "location, materials, and design." Okay, materials and design are not issues that we're discussing right now, but location is. So my understanding is that the Heritage Department is already aware of potential conflicts with location, and that they're going to take that into account when they give their approval for the Heritage designation or approval for this property.
And also.
I don't think the issue is the height, it's the, it's the fact that it's there at all.
Yes, and also, like, the proposed addition, you know, if it would conform to the existing bylaw in the setback, that would also help in terms of visibility for drivers at that intersection. And I don't, every.
So regarding the first point is the fence, we still under, we're discussed with Heritage. So we have, we didn't design the material and the height yet.
You'll take into account the traffic problems?
Yes.
All right.
I'm just curious in terms of, you're requesting a zero setback from the lot line. In terms of what it looks like from, I'm just looking at the online view of it, but, and I've been down to this area, there's still going to be city boulevard and a sidewalk?
Correct.
It's not like it's budding up to the sidewalk. And that's what it looks like from the street view, but I'm curious if I'm right in that interpretation.
That's right.
From the site plan?
It's city side.
There's still city boulevard, and then there's still the sidewalk?
Correct.
Okay, and you're proposing to build a setback from the front wall of the house, and Heritage is good with that in terms of locating the...
We discussed it, and Heritage is good with that.
Yep, thank you.
Would you be, would you be, I don't understand why the fence goes all the way along the property line. Would you be agreeable to terminating the fence 10 foot, 7 inches from the corner, which is the line, which is in line with the porch? I, I don't, I don't see why the fence needs to go right to the corner of the property.
For us, we can discuss it with Heritage, which is...
But I don't know that this is necessarily a Heritage condition. This is a safety condition. And Heritage, when you look at it from the perspective of the Heritage quality of the dwelling and the property, I, I just don't know why the, the fencing is being proposed to go to the corner. I think the neighbor has raised a valid point about safety, and you may agree with it.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. We should discuss it with the owner, and the owner agree with that.
Would you agree to a condition that the fencing not extend...
All the way to the corner.
Be set back 10.7. The reason I picked that number is because it's the number on the sightline, that the, the fence be set back 10 feet from the corner?
So, I agree.
You would?
Is that all right with them in sightline?
Well, it's not, it, no, it goes all the way to the corner. It's...
Really? I'm not sure.
This line here, well, I think this is the fencing. Maybe I... Is the proposal to have the fence go along the entire property line, what we have before us right now? Because the drawing isn't really clear.
Yeah, that's what the proposal is, but we can, we can get the 10.7 meter far from the corner.
Okay.
My guess is this fence can have a height limit from 177 First Avenue, according to the bylaw, and so I want something to do with the height from the corner.
Transportation.
I don't know if I'm going to land that, but...
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, we're in committee. Can we have a motion?
Subject to the report. Impact on the streetscape. I see here that Heritage is saying that they're going to be dealing with it, but I guess you're right, you're going to deal with it from Heritage's point of view. It says in regards to its impact on the streetscape. But the issue is, was this traffic planning have any issues with this? Would it be circulated to them? I know right of way management said they don't have a problem, but they don't look at it from a safety point of view. So I agree there's a safety issue potentially here, but I don't know if, it's an open question is whether Heritage would be concerned with that or just how it fits within the streetscape.
And the only reason I would entertain the changes, I, I can't see there being Heritage advantage to extending the fence up to the corner.
Right. So I guess it's within our purview to, especially if the applicant says she's okay with it, to impose that as a condition.
Mr. Chairman, if, if there are no other questions, I'd like to move approval of the application subject to the Heritage condition, but I'd like to also add one additional condition that the proposed fencing along the east streetscape is to be set back 10 feet, 10 feet from the corner of Tiverton Avenue and First Avenue. A minimum of 10 feet, sorry.
Three meters?
Pardon?
Three meters?
Sure, that's fine, too. I just...
We're 10 feet and brackets.
Okay, I'm just trying to respond to the lady, and it sounds like the applicant's in agreement, that it's no advantage to them if people are piling up on their front lawn all the time.
They're not going to be able to see, even have a driver anywhere.
Yeah, exactly. You're going to have as much problem with the fence as everybody else, because you can't see. So that's my motion.
Do we have a second or...
I'll, I'll second your motion.
All in favor? Do you have your approval subject to the two conditions?
Thank you.
No. Did we do 12? And oh, yeah, what about the lady that's one came in? We, we held that down for you. You didn't tell us you were ready to come up again. What application is that again?
Number 13.
Number 13.
224 Evelyn Avenue.
Why would you... You, should you call her back up again, or I can't remember what was...
Now, could you please come up and...
Who are all these people for though? We must have missed something.
We have one more, we have Park.
Yeah, what? High Park. What about, and what about O'Connor? Did we defer O'Connor?
Yeah.
Yes, we did. I don't have the...
All right.
Thank you for allowing me to have a chance to review those comments that came in late yesterday. I'm Joanna Fast. I'm the agent for the applicant. The property at 224 Evelyn contains a two-and-a-half-story single-family dwelling. It contains three dwelling units, and it has one legal front yard parking space that's been approved. The owner is completing interior renovations, and through that, they're legalizing the third dwelling unit. It is permitted by the zoning bylaw, but through their review of the building permit application, it was identified that two parking spaces are required, whereas only one is provided.
You've read the objection and...
Yes, we've read the objections. We'd like to confirm that we're not proposing any new parking spaces. We'll not be encroaching onto the neighbor's property. And with regards to the, what I was just provided, I'd like to just reiterate that the actual variance is not to allow for the third-floor apartment. That is permitted, but it is the, the parking variance that we have applied for. The parking...
I take it these three dwelling units are occupied and don't have cars? Tenants don't have cars?
I'm not sure whether they have cars, but there are parking permits available along Evelyn.
Okay.
Transportation staff have commented, and they have no concern.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions? Do we have a motion?
I'm sure you said those three units are permitted in the zone. Yes. It's not one of the variances.
Public transportation close by, correct?
Pardon me?
Right on, it's on public transportation. Mr. Chair, if there's no further questions, I would move approval of the application. I don't believe there's any conditions.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Do you have your approval? Thank you. I don't think there's any more. 12 is deferred.
No, we, there was a motion.
Number 12, 141 High Park Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, I have received new instructions, which is to withdraw the application.
Okay, Mr. Flynn.
Thank you.
Do we know the motion for that or no?
Do we need a motion for closing the file or no? I guess not, right?
I don't think so. He's withdrawing it.
It's withdrawn, but we should still close the file. Okay.
Second, second...
May I ask something? It's Linda Schneider speaking.
Yeah.
My mother, Ernest Schneider. May I ask on what basis the withdrawal is being requested since we are here?
Well, then perhaps you could ask him outside. Means the applicant, the item, the item isn't before us anymore. There's no application to do anything right now. It's gone. We just moved, we just moved. He could come back again, but you know, if he came back with another application. But his request was to withdraw. You can't force him to proceed with the development, and we've just, we've just closed the file.
Thank you.
The application's been withdrawn, it's...
Do we have a second or to the closing of the file?
Sure.
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So who are the people in there here for 130, I guess?
130.
They're early birds? You can start with them if I'm back.
Yeah, I think we'll be returning at a quarter to two. Is that okay? Quarter to two?
Sure.
Sylvia, quarter to two. Sylvia.
Sylvia.
I'm sorry?
We'd like to come back at quarter to two.
Does that give you time to answer?
That was weird, the one-on-one, 119, that was rude.
But...
Didn't have it gross.
Doesn't mean it was right.